Phones, devices, et cetera. So at six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one safe, under God, one indivisible.
Item number two is the invocation. For that, we have our friend Pastor Mark Towns. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. And on behalf of Pastor Dennis, who wasn't able to be here, I'm thankful to be a second fiddle. So, but thank you, council members and community. Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for a wonderful night, a beautiful day. We do praise you for the wonders of creation. We thank you for this time tonight and pray for the leadership of our community that we're grateful for and pray that you would continue to pour out your wisdom liberally upon them, that they might lead and govern and guide this community to experience the health and prosperity, Father, that each person desires and that we've experienced now in the blessing of this community. And so, thank you for the things that will be celebrated tonight and we pray that you would give wisdom for the future. And we pray that in all ways, Father, that we might glorify you and honor you. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is our participation. That's covered on the screen. If there's any item on the posted agenda you wish to speak about, please see the city secretary. She will let you speak. You're allowed to speak on any item that is posted on the agenda. Item four is consent agenda. I have a request to pull for D. So we will vote on A. Oh, okay.
I was talking to you.
B and C. So B, C, and D. A is action regarding minutes of July 5th. That's the only one. So I'll entertain a motion for that one.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the minutes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Have a second. Charlie, a second. All of the favors right in?
Uh-uh. We didn't get a vote.
Oh, damn it. Sorry.
We all did it. That was funny.
I know, and I wasn't. Sorry. Okay, vote on here.
That was funny. We all raised our hands.
I know. Whoops. There you go. Thank you all. That was supposed to pass. With the record effect, we do have a quorum. Thank you all for coming. So item B, action regarding first amendment to agreement to provide professional services between City of Saginaw and Randy Edwards. For that, Director of Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a request to increase Randy's contract for inspections. He was about to have to terminate his contract because he couldn't make it with the increasing diesel prices and he's driving his own vehicle. He was gonna have to give it up because he just couldn't make it work. So we proposed back to him to give him a little bump, to keep him around for all these projects that we have going. He brings a lot of value to the city, to all the projects. He's familiar with everybody, how the things work and the system, and he's a lot of value to us. And rather than to have to go out and hire somebody else, which would be more costly or rely on Kimley Horn, which would really cost more money than that, I think it's a good deal.
Questions for Randy? Go ahead.
How long has Mr. Edwards been working contract for the city?
Let's see. He started...
Melanie? A year, some other year?
Right at a year.
About a year, okay. And how much longer do we anticipate keeping him onboard?
It's not a permanent deal. This is gonna be as the projects, you know, as they start finishing out and then we get less and less projects, then we'll cut him loose.
And is this a monthly fee whether he works or not?
It's a monthly fee. He works regardless. I mean, he works.
He works for it?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Saturdays, he works, you know, all hours, early morning hours when they're having concrete pours and such, so.
Okay. All right. Those are some questions that were not included in our packet, so thank you very much for clarifying that for us.
Sure.
Any other questions on B? If not, I'll entertain a motion for B.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the action regarding the first amendment to agreement for Randy Edwards.
Okay. Have a second. Have a second. Let's vote. See, I got it right this time. Thank you all. Item C, action regarding award of bid for construction of Saginaw Northwest Booster Pump Station. That, Director of Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We opened bids on the 12th of July for the construction of the Northwest Booster Pump Station. The low bid was from Felix Construction for $1,278,000. Kimley Horn did their background check on them. All the references come back. So the apparent low bidder is Felix Construction, and we recommend awarding that contract to Felix Construction.
Questions?
Sir, I had a question on that one also. I know we had talked about this in the past. Did we have an estimate of what we thought this was going to cost us? That may not be a question that you can answer.
Sure.
Kim?
We definitely do. I don't have it on hand. It doesn't look like in our letter that we wrote if it was above or below our opinion of probable cost, but I can get that for you.
Was that over or above?
Andrew actually is the manager on this, so I would have to check and see what he had anticipated before we bid it. I can get that for you, though.
Well, I'd like to have that information. If we table this, what effect is that gonna have? If we table this to the next meeting?
Yeah, have y'all discuss how quickly they're wanting to go.
I don't think it'd be a problem to table until the next meeting.
Okay.
One thing, if I'm correct, this will be paid out by the jurors eventually? How are we gonna pay for this?
I thought it was from the...
It's gonna be...
What says the impact fees?
Impact fees.
And American Rescue Plan.
ARPA.
Okay. Got it. And so, any issue if we don't take action on this tonight?
No, it's not gonna hurt anything to table it until the next meeting.
That would you like?
Then I'd make a motion to table this until the next meeting, or we get the information from...
Is there a second?
Second.
To table? Okay. Let's vote. We will address this at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Item D is action regarding drainage easement maintenance agreement with UCD Saginaw LP. Director of Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is an agreement between UCD and the city identifying the responsibilities that they're gonna have to meet in an operation and maintenance plan. It deals with, you know, controlling the weeds of the brush and the vegetation in the area. They have to keep it mowed down. Once it gets a foot tall, they have to keep it down to three quarters of an inch or have to keep it down below a foot in height and remove anything that's bigger than three quarters of an inch. I apologize, I should've had this exhibit in your packet, but I failed to get it in there. But it's basically that. They can't have any standing water. The grass cover has to be established. They have to keep it mowed monthly or any other time that the vegetation exceeds 12 inches in that area. And they have to go in there and pick up any debris, trash on a regular schedule, every six months at least, to keep it clean.
Questions?
Question?
Yes, sir.
So what you're... If I'm understanding you correctly, what we're actually looking at is that natural state drainage is gonna fall into like everybody, every citizen, you gotta keep your yard mowed, you can't... Okay. And it's gonna fall under code enforcement then?
Yes. Well, city staff can, I mean, will keep an eye on it as code enforcement can enforce it as well.
Okay.
Why wouldn't this just fall underneath the FEMA guidelines for floodplain and cleaning? Why do we have to have this spelled out like this for natural? Because that's really what we're doing, right? It's a floodplain and we're wanting this done so that we're not impeding water flow. We're getting the water on down.
We're keeping it clean, not trashy and maintaining it. So which we can, you can do that in floodplain.
Yes, and my understanding of this is that this is a dedicated drainage easement. It's not just general 100-year floodplain. So ordinarily, utility easements would be owned and maintained by the city at the city's cost. This shifts the burden of that cost to the property owner to maintain, even though it is a public drainage easement. So that's why we need this. It doesn't, there's no default rule that requires that they otherwise maintain a public utility easement.
So it is a floodplain, right?
It is a floodplain, but it's a drainage easement through there, through that floodplain, yeah.
So I guess my question back then, what happens if the guy doesn't want to agree to this?
You mean, what happens if he doesn't sign this?
Yeah.
Agreement?
Yeah.
I don't know what the conversations have been with the developer. My understanding is that they are willing to sign this and this provides some teeth, essentially. If they don't maintain it, we can enforce this through code enforcement, but we can also enforce it through this agreement that allows us to place a lien on the developable property if we have to incur costs to maintain the easement.
But you could put a lien on it through code enforcement, too.
Well, yeah, you could, but if through code enforcement, you'd have to put the lien on the lot that has the drainage easement, which is worthless. This allows us to place a lien on the adjacent developed property, which we otherwise wouldn't have the authority to do.
Yeah. I would just ask a question because I didn't know. Try to learn something.
All right. Other questions about D?
And Mayor, and you said something about trash collection every six months. Is that a reasonable request, or should we have like a, you know, if it's piled up three feet high or, you know, 12 inches high like the garbage, like the grass?
It states every six months or as necessary. So if it requires more than, then they have to go in there and remove it.
So who's gonna dictate who's necessary?
The city will.
The city will. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on D? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion we approve the drainage easement maintenance agreement with UCD Saginaw.
Okay. Charlie, a second. Let us vote. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you, Randy. Item number five, recognition of summer apprentice program participants. For that, Melanie McManus, Director of Human Resources. Welcome, Melanie.
Pleasure.
Good morning. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just call, this is the second year for the student apprentice program, and I'm just gonna tell you some details this year of what we did. This year, we started advertising around March. In April, the application deadline was here. We were seeking 50, which is up from 32 from last year. We had students from four different high schools, Boswell, Marine Creek, Saginaw, and Chisholm Trail. We had four colleges, which was Tarrant County, Texas State, Southwestern, and Illinois State. We interviewed 18 people and we ended up hiring nine apprentices. The program ends this year, August 31st. The purpose of the student apprentice program is to inspire local students with the opportunity to explore public services firsthand as a seasonal employee and temporary relief to the stretched city of departments. This experience can nurture the students' calling by providing hands-on training and development while preparing items for success in the workforce. So I'd like to recognize all the people in the back row and some of the second row for student apprentice and the staff for this year. It's been a great year. So Keith's gonna go through the slides that tells you which students work for each department. So from the library, we have Jasmine, Cameron, Raquel, and Janet. Or, yeah. And then on the police department, we have Alyssa, which Alyssa is returning from last year and she was part of the MIAC program. For animal services, we have Fabian and Emily. And for the recreation center, we have Micah. And then for communications, we have Oscar.
We're gonna take a picture, aren't we?
So at this time, if all y'all will come up here, we'll give you certificates and we'll take a picture.
Do we need to hide or stand up? Do you want us to hide or stand up?
Y'all can stand up.
Okay.
And then also, I would like to thank all the staff members that helped us with this program. That's listed on the screen.
Congratulations.
So against the law, I still just wanna speak. So I was gonna offer that, but I assume they don't wanna speak.
Can we ask them questions?
I don't know. We wanna ask some questions?
Sure.
And also, I was gonna tell the students, y'all don't have to stay for the whole meeting, so please don't feel obligated. We may be here a while, so I don't want y'all to be here all night. But thank you all very much. Congratulations. This is year number two, right? So it's a great year. Year number two, look forward to year number three.
Oh, is he school?
Yeah. She's the police station.
Alyssa. She's a cute girl.
So Melanie, what kind of tasks did these students perform?
Police department. They worked at the animal services, they did the cleaning of the cages, helped customers. At the rec center, they would help at the front desk. And then I think Micah did some stuff at the aquatic center also. And then at the library, I guess they did checking out the front desk. And then at the library...
PD.
Oh, the police department, Alyssa helped with CID and that department this year. Last year, she was in communications and she was in CID this year.
So she's gonna come be a dispatcher one day, right?
Maybe. And then Oscar helped Pedro with communications. And he did the slideshow.
The PD, she was in the Mayor's Youth Survivor Council as well.
Right. Yeah, this is her second, that was her second year for this program and then she was in the Mayor's Youth Council. Thank you.
I think Aquatic Center folks are coming in. I just got word, council, that we do have numbers on the booster pump station if we want to take action on that or discuss it, open it back up and discuss it. I would have to ask Bryn how we would do that once we have tabled something, but I bet he knows.
Yeah, it's absolutely fine. Whatever the final vote is at the end of the night is what will prevail. So if you all want to discuss it, that's certainly your purview.
What do y'all wanna do, council? What's council's pleasure?
Well, if we can fix it, let's do it.
Okay. All right, so we will go back to item number four, C. Back to four, C. Action regarding order of bid for construction Northwest Booster Pump Station, Randy Newsom. So I was just told that the bid came in at 1.4 million. Which, what you're saying, Gabe?
No, the OPCC was 1.4 million, but the bid came in at just under 1.3.
Yeah, so we're under the probable cost assessment. Okay. Other questions on that, council, now that we have numbers? If we're good, then I will entertain a motion for four, C.
Mayor, I move that we approve four, C.
A second.
Let's vote. Excellent. Thank you, guys. Thanks for getting that information, folks. I appreciate it. Quick work. Nice. Moving on. Let's take, since they're all here now, let's take a jump to seven, since I know that Aquatic Center staff just showed up. I don't wanna keep them.
We're not all here.
We're not all here?
If that's close to school.
So you're gonna wait a few minutes? Okay, we'll do it at six then. All right, six. Consideration action regarding business recognition program award, Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee Program. For that, Heath Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just wanted to bring this to you. Back in April, we brought to you about this, our new program through the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee, the business beautification award and program. And we had our, we finally had our very first nomination. And nominations are available, or anyone can make one from the community, can even be a non-resident, could make it a nomination, but for a resident or a business within Saginaw. And we had a resident that nominated our local Saginaw Sonic Drive-In for the award, our very first award. We actually received it too late for our July meeting, so that's why we're having it at this one. Our Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee, of course, voted for it and they approved it and thought it's great to have that. And this is just a few words that the nominate, the nominator said. They were nominated in the best improved category. The nominator said the following, "Recent updates to trim make it look sharp. They always keep the landscaping neat and tidy while also celebrating and decorating for the holidays. We love Saginaw's Sonic." Wanted, I just wanted to bring, I don't have any presentation or anyone here, just wanted to bring this to you to let you know that we had our very first nominee and award recipient.
Very nice. Now, the item says consideration action. I don't think we mean action, do we? Okay. Just recognizing. Thank you, Keith. Will we get them a, some kind of a award or some kind of something?
They are getting a, similar to like we do for adopt a spot, they're getting a sign that'll be put out front. And so, very nice, I think the copy of the sign might be in your packet, just showing that they won the award, recognizing.
Very nice. That's great. All right, thank you, folks. All right, since we still have all Aquatic Center folks here, we will skip seven, but we'll come back to it as soon as everybody shows up.
Let's skip eight.
No, eight is a survey, so I think we can still do the survey. Micah's here, right? Yeah, there you go. Aquatic Center survey presentation, Micah Emerson. Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Thank you. First and foremost, I would like to say thank you, Mayor and the city council for having me, for this opportunity. Presentation. All right, so.
Oh. Forgot to give you this.
Oh. Right back. This is my project breakdown on why I created this project. So I would overhear, there was many negative feedbacks being talked about, things being said about how the pool wasn't able to be open. And I know that the aquatic staff and the rec staff have been working pretty hard. So I thought, what can I do to show them that their hard work wasn't for no reason? So instead of just hearing things about people online, I thought it would be a great idea to gather some information from residents and non-residents that have actually visited our pool and seen what it was like with that experience and their satisfaction rates. I know that, sorry, negative comments reflect on the city's image in the public. It can decrease reputation. I know it can also create a negative self-image amongst employees and workers. They can often develop self-doubt and they could question themselves about, are they doing things right and are they working hard and why they're working? For this reason, I asked myself what I can do to fix that. So how did I create the survey? So I use an application called Quadrix to compile and organize the data that I will collect. It's easy to use and has great features. I'll show an example of the survey later in the presentation. I just wanted to make a short survey. I did a needs assessment and I asked, I asked myself a few questions. I asked, how can I make this survey easy to read, easy to understand, and how can I get this to people at the pool? I decided on a format. I collaborated with Jason and Vicky about a few questions to go over for the survey. What, we defined what satisfaction would look like to our customers. I did, went over materials and a few, I set myself a few goals for that present, for the survey. I made it short, simple, and I chose to do it anonymously, simply because I wanted people to be able to give honest feedback about their experience and not feel like they were being tracked. I broke the survey down into three sections, customer information, customer staff satisfaction, and then pool and overall satisfaction. So the survey method that I used to compile my data, I use QR codes and paper copies. I sat outside the aquatic center and as people were leaving, I would ask them if it would be okay, if they would fill out the survey and to give their honest feedback. So a couple people chose to do the online QR codes. I can pass around the examples if you wanna see it. This is the papers, the online QR code that I passed out. Paper copy I'm gonna show you in the presentation. So that's the paper that's being passed around. So the question that I asked was, how often do you visit the Saginaw Aquatic Center per week? How many hours a day do you spend at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? What admittance method did you use most frequently to access the Saginaw Aquatic Center? How satisfied are you with the customer service at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? How satisfied are you with the lifeguard service at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? Please mark your level of agreement with the following statement, "I feel safe at the Saginaw Aquatic Center." Please mark your level of agreement with the following statement, "I pay a reasonable amount for the services I receive at the Saginaw Aquatic Center." And for question eight, on a scale from one to five, one being the lowest satisfaction and five being the highest, how satisfied are you with your overall experience at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? Number nine was an optional portion of the survey where people could leave comments. And on to the results. So for question one, how often do you visit the Saginaw Aquatic Center per week? Majority of our participants, 71% that participated in the survey, said they would, they visited one to two times a week. So it's clearly see that our participants are coming one or twice a week. 23% said they would visit three to four times a week. And then five or more, 6% said they would visit five or more times a week. How many hours a day do you spend at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? 44% said they visit one to two hours a day. Three to four, or 53% of participants said they visit three to four hours a day. And 3% of participants in the survey visit five to six hours a day. I don't think anyone wants to be out in the heat that long. What admittance method do you use most frequently to access the Saginaw Aquatic Center? So at the aquatic center and the rec center, they have, they chose to classify or use a demographic to categorize their customers. I chose to add that to the survey, simply to keep track of the demographic of the people that came into the aquatic center. I thought it would be simpler than asking them specifics such as name, age, race. I thought I'd just keep it simple and use this just so I can pinpoint exactly where the survey is coming from and what admittance method they use would help me to do that and put them in an age range. So, it's clearly see that our participants are coming one or twice a week. Twenty-three percent said they would visit three to four times a week. And then five or more, six percent said they would visit five or more times a week. How many hours a day do you spend at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? Forty-four percent said they visit one to two hours a day. Three to four, or fifty-three percent of participants said they visit three to four hours a day. And three percent of participants in the survey visit five to six hours a day. I don't think anyone wants to be out in the heat that long. What admittance method do you use most frequently to access the Saginaw Aquatic Center? So at the Aquatic Center and the Rec Center, they have, they chose to classify or demogra, use a demographic to categorize their customers. I chose to add that to the survey, simply to keep track of the demographic of the people that came into the Aquatic Center. I thought it would be simpler than asking them specifics such as name, age, race. I thought I'd just keep it simple and use this just so I can pinpoint exactly where the survey is coming from and what admittance method they use would help me to do that and put them in an age range. How satisfied are you with the customer service at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? So seventy-eight percent of participants said they were extremely satisfied with the customer service. Sixteen percent said they were somewhat satisfied, and six percent said they were, they were extremely dissatisfied. So, we got one bad rating for that. How satisfied are you with the lifeguard service at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? Eighty-six percent said they were extremely satisfied with the lifeguard service. Eleven percent said somewhat, and three percent said extremely dissatisfied, which is one person also. We must have severely inconvenienced that one person. Please mark your level of agreement with the following statement: I feel safe at the Saginaw Aquatic Center. Eighty-seven percent said they were extremely satisfied, and thirteen percent said they were somewhat satisfied. We had no, somewhat disagrees and no disagreements with this statement. So everyone that came and filled out a survey said that they felt safe at the Saginaw Aquatic Center. Please mark your level of agreement with the following statement: I pay a reasonable amount for the services at the Saginaw Aquatic Center. Seventy percent agreed with this statement. Twenty-two percent somewhat agree with this statement. Four percent somewhat disagreed, and four percent disagreed. So, the somewhat disagree and the disagree were one person each. How satisfied are you with your overall experience at the Saginaw Aquatic Center? For this question, it was a star rating system, one through five. The five being the highest, of course, and one being the lowest. We had an average score of four point seventy-two. So, that's a pretty good rating. And the last section was eight, the last question. Yep, the last question was the comments that were made. I'm going to post the comments up on the screen. I'm only going to read off a few of them, because we had a lot of good comments and a lot of, a lot of recommendations for some changes that could be made. So, for the ones that I would, I'm just going to read off some of them. You feel free to read them if you'd like, but these are just a few. We had a great time. The lifeguards were very aware of everything going on. We will definitely be returning. We love the Aquatic Center. I love bringing my kids here during the summer, and I have for many years. Great place to come to enjoy ourselves. Keep doing a great job. The staff are courteous and friendly, and we have a great time. The pool is a very fun and loving environment, and me and my family love coming here to get some fun, some sun, and have fun. Saginaw can be very proud of this facility. It is a marvelous asset to the community. Very neat, clean, attractive, and well-managed. It is a pleasure going here. Jennifer is great. Also Tiffany. So those are some of the good comments that we got. We do have some, some good constructive criticism. It's nothing bad, just some possible changes that could be made that would really help. I'm actually not going to go over all of them, just so we have time for everything else. So, in conclusion. So, based on the data that I've been able to collect, I can probably say the majority of participants, seventy percent gave the best review possible in all sections. Seventy percent, which is pretty much a good number of participants that felt like in every question that I asked, they gave the best possible answer. So, it's a good job for everyone. The pool is a very popular service, and people love it. I would personally say that Vicky, Jason, and Jen, Jennifer, and the rest of the staff, the aquatic and the rec center, did a great job. Did a great job in getting the pool open. They worked really hard, and of course, you don't have to take my word for it, because the data speaks for itself. Thank you. If you have any questions, please feel free to.
You didn't mention, you did this for a school project, right?
Yes, sir.
Will you tell us what the class was and what the purpose of this assignment was?
So, it was my final internship class for my major, for my degree. They didn't really specify what my project was to be. They kind of just left it up to me. So, when I overheard my supervisor speaking, I thought it'd be a great idea to show them that their hard work wasn't for nothing.
That's awesome. Great, great work, Micah. Any other questions, Council?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
You are a very impressive young man, Mr. Emerson. I cannot thank you enough. You are the ultimate representative of what this apprentice program should be. The work that you did, you strike me as the type of person that would have done this anyway, whether it was a project or not. And I, again, I commend you on this. I would like to see more of this from our apprentices. And they don't have to come up here and present, but I would just love to see reports come in from them about their experience with the city, and doesn't have to be this type of thing, but, you know, you're an amazing young man, and I expect to see you go far.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anything else, Council? There you go. Well done. Good job. I think our Aquatic Center staff should be very proud of themselves as well, that, some quantitative data, the good work y'all have done, so really, well done. We will recognize in a minute, but everybody's not here yet, right?
This gives me time to wipe the tears away from my eyes. They just walked in, okay.
Alright, so staff recognition. Saginaw Aquatic Center personnel. For that, Keith Reinhardt and Vicky Weldon.
Thank you Mayor and Council. As I said, I have, glad it took them a second to get here, wiped the tears out of my eyes from that last presentation. My Micah did a great job. Just wanted to recognize our aquatic staff. This is a, it's a tough job, and most people don't realize it. They, documented to you that they, and it's one hundred percent true, that they get cussed out. They get verbally threatened, sometimes even physically threatened. I know one of them happened Friday before last with a, with a patron. They're out in, you know, an incredible summer of temperature that like we, we haven't seen since 2011, where every day is over a hundred degrees. We had three days over a hundred and nine degrees, and they're out there. They're out there in it. Now, they're covered in sunscreen, but that's, which they should be, but they work very, very hard. The staff has worked very hard to get this facility open. We haven't been open since 2019. We've had things that were out of our control, such as the COVID and the freeze that we had, and just getting things repaired. Trying to get parts, trying to hire staff. It was very tough. We were able to hire an amazing person. I've been privileged to work with her for, my math is not very good, and I don't, I didn't bring my eighth grade calculator with me, but for quite a few years, teaching, who's taught swim lessons for us, Ms. Jennifer Blick, and she became our Aquatic Center Coordinator this year. She brings a significant amount of experience, not just in aquatics, certainly in aquatics, but just working with, with kids and young adults. We've had some new programs this year, such as our Century Night, and which is geared more towards children and even adults with special needs. We had one, I believe it was on the ninth of Janu, uh, January, yes, January. One of the J month, July, and we're having one coming up on the twenty, or we had one on the twenty-third. This Saturday also. Some of the things she's looking at doing is, or that she has done so far is bringing some, some fun, interactive games to the pool, such as Cornhole. I think I saw the Giant Connect Four, which is my favorite, and I'll tack any one of y'all if you try to beat me. I'm very competitive with that. And so wanting to do some more classes this next year for special needs kids. I'll turn it over to her, the amazing Ms. Jennifer Blick.
Hi. So I'm Jennifer Blick, and I stepped in shortly after the pool opened this summer. And I did not get to choose my staff. I didn't get to interview them. I didn't get to sift through their applications. I didn't get to ask them questions, and so I had no idea if they were going to accept me or not. I wasn't there for their hiring, or their training, or for any of it. And I was coming in to be over them after they had already become a team. And they didn't have to accept me. They could have made this very, very difficult for me, and they didn't. And I didn't know if they would have been the guards that I would have chosen, or in the customer service that I wanted to treat my guests as well as I expected them to. But within a week, I wanted to adopt every single one of them and put them in my pocket and take them home. Because if my child were struggling in that pool, these are the people that I want jumping for my children, for my children, for my family, for my loved ones. They are, because they're young, they are looked at as children, and they can be treated incredibly disrespectfully. When they have to correct adults and say, I'm sorry, your child is not tall enough to get on that slide. I'm sorry, your child can't be under there. They're going to cut their head wide open. The adults immediately demand an explanation. Why? Who are you? Who are you to tell me that my child, you're just a kid. Who are you to tell me that my child can't go? I paid. I paid. But then the minute that that child is in danger, or that child has a bloody nose, or that child falls down, that same parent who just cussed at my guards, and my guards held it together beautifully. They handled it like men, and they handled it like women, and they do it every single day without fail. They have never lost their cool with a single adult who literally bowed up in their faces. They have taken it, and within the same ten-minute period, turned around and saved that person's child, and treated their bloody nose, and treated trauma like a first responder. Any EMT should be proud of these kids and what they do. They are treated, they are treated like the least of us, but we expect the most of them. And we expect them to do it with the maturity of a thirty-year-old, forgetting to give grace because they aren't adults yet. They're becoming amazing adults, and I can't wait to watch them grow. So, that being said, they have been very good to me, and they've tolerated all the changes I've tried to implement, and the voting system to promote from within, instead of seeking out other guards, when we had one going back to college. And they've been very good about it, and they've been very honest with themselves and with me and with each other about who they felt was right for the job. And it was a long process, so you're going to hear me mention headguard more than once as I go down the list. And I'm going to slaughter their names, and I apologize. I'm sorry, y'all. I know you by your first names. I don't know your last names. I'm so, so sorry. You can slaughter mine if you want to. It's okay. It's okay. Okay. So these are in alphabetical order, not, not by favorite. Actually, I don't even think, oh no, they are. They are by alphabetical, okay. Brady Alexander Hartnett. Sebastian Ariano. You can clap for each other. Justin Broome. Katie Brown. Headguard. Eli Dahl. Adrian Durant. Headguard. Kayden Edwards. Kayla Fornier. Fornier? Fornier? Garen Gaethry. Headguard candidate, if you can't tell. CJ George. David Kurek. Headguard candidate. Devin Motley. If your child is hurt, if your child has a trauma, you want Devin there first. Devin needs to go into trauma nursing, and I need all of you to write her a letter and force her to do that for you. She should be on an ambulance. She's amazing. Where am I at? Lila Norris. Nora. No, Nora. Nora. Poor Noah. 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 Arona. Headguard. Avery Preston. Brayden Reese. Headguard. Natalia Silva. Gone back to college, but headguard in our hearts. Tyler Snyder. Tanner Snyder. Nadia Starnes. Landon Suggs. Kayden Thornton. Elliot Weathers. Headguard candidate with special considerations. Caitlin Wood. Headguard candidate. And none of it happens. Nobody ever gets into that rec and sees these guards and lets these guards be amazing without going through customer service. So, my amazing customer service who sets the tone for our entire day. They get yelled at because people's address says Fort Worth, and they want to pay resident rate. They get yelled at because they ask for utility bills. They get yelled at because they don't know that someone who's had plastic surgery is in a senior. Like, they don't know, and so they get yelled at for that. They get told that they're stupid, that they can't do math. They get told a lot of things, but they also get appreciated and told that they're amazing. So, I hope they can focus on all the compliments that are very much deserved. I appreciate them very much. Joseph Crowe Means. Kylie Fulbright. Adriana Garcia. Bennett Garman. Savannah Jones. Molly May. Emma. Oh my gosh, how does she say it? She just told me today. How does she say it? How does Emma say her last name? She's amazing. Daniela Viejo. And Mia Zerito. They are exceptional. Every single one of them is exceptional, and they represent your city well. You should be so proud and so grateful. Thank you for letting me do with them. So while you're lighting them up, I'm going to read a text. I'm so sorry, I forgot. I forgot, okay. So you guys do whatever Pedro tells you to do, and actually, you get to see me while I say this. Okay. Okay. Alright, a month or so ago, there was an adult at the pool, and this adult was there on one of our excessive heat days. And this adult knelt down by the pool and succumbed to the heat and passed out. And when this adult passed out, they fell into the pool. They fell into the pool, and they hit their head, and they developed, they gave themselves a concussion, and they cut their face up a lot, and they were unconscious at the bottom of our pool. And these guys saved that person's life. So, this person sent a message to Vicky. I'm doing so much. "I'm doing so much better. I had a concussion. I pretty much tweaked everything in my jaw. It still hurts. My vision is way better. Everything's good. I'm back to work and ready to go. I just got to get used to all this heat. Please tell your buddies thank you so much. I owe you huge, and all your staff. I wouldn't be here without you guys. Honestly, I feel that. I was really out of it, and I just wanted to say thanks again." That's what she wrote. All right.
I think we need to stop.
Pop in here. Let's go.
All right, Vicki, I'm going to have to come over here next to Jason.
Don't be hanged on that from here.
It's just a big crowd. Ms. Copeland, I can't see your face, so you're just going to sit there.
Hop on the chair.
And then, uh, how, Ms. Big Horse, you're going to also have to move because you're being blind when it's too close. Your face is like bigger. I want to see your nose. This is the biggest round we have. All right, ready? And cheese. Hold on. I think someone moved. You're quick, what's we're going to have to do? Close your camera, right? All right, you ready? One, two, cheese. All right.
But he keeps asking. Also, I wanted to mention that your exceptional intern helped me with the process of letting them vote for the new head guards. He created an anonymous voting situation for them, and I appreciate, he did it on the spot when I asked for it, and I appreciate him so very much. So I just wanted to tell you, Mike is exceptional.
Ms. Blick, before you walk off, I'd like for your lifeguards to know, because my granddaughter went to the day camp, that they've inspired her to want to become a lifeguard.
Oh, would you want me to call them for the day?
You could tell them another time.
We'll give them a minute to clear out.
Sure.
At some point, the rec center is going to have to quit setting the bar so high.
I can't believe all those folks didn't want to stay.
I know.
I'm shocked.
It's so exciting.
I told the apprentices, please leave. You don't want to stay all night for this, so. We're going to wait one minute. Councilmember Big Horse, or Councilmember Copeland had to step out. We're going to wait for her before we move to item number nine. So we're moving. Is it me, or is it a little bit warm in here? Not terrible, but a little bit.
There's a few more people today than there usually is in here.
Maybe it'll cool off a little bit now?
It's warm, and he's in full uniform and bodyguard. I'm bodyguard.
Are they so quiet?
I know. Not normally quiet in here.
I know. There she is.
Item number nine. At 6:55, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding replat of Burlington Industrial District Number Two, addition lot 1R, block one, being 96.125 acres out of the E Meredith survey abstract. And who is that? Who is, I have Joe LaCroix. Oh, welcome, sir.
Mayor, member counsel, good evening. My name is Joe LaCroix. I'm with Barrett Hampton Brown. We're the civil engineers and surveyors engaged on the project. Don't have anything as exciting as pool staff or life-saving, but hopefully we'll get through this one. Please extend my congratulations to all those folks. Sounds like you've got a great group of people there. Let's give you just a quick background on the, on the project, and be happy to answer any questions you might have. Fairly straightforward replat, combining two adjacent lots, cleaning up some old right-of-way issues for the project over at 1300 North Jarvis. The construction plans have already been approved. It's been constructed. When we went to the pre-development conference, there wasn't a replat request at that time, so we didn't do one. Since then, one's been requested, so we went ahead and proceeded with that. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Council questions?
I answered all my questions.
Okay. All right. Everybody knows what this is, right? This is AG's, AG Hollenstein property on Jarvis. So that's, that's the, it's industrial part of our fine city, so. Any other questions, concerns? This is a public hearing, so folks in the audience, you are welcome to come speak on this at any time if you have any questions, concerns. You don't have to fill out a form. You can just come approach the lectern at this time. So this is the point, if you want to speak, please come forward. If not, then at 6:57, I will take it out of a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consideration actions regarding the replot of Burlington Industrial District Number Two.
I'll second.
Second. Let's take a vote. Thank y'all. Thank you, sir. All right. Item number 10. Consideration action regarding ordinance 2022-09 amending the Chapter Six Animals of the Saginaw City Code, amending section 6.1 would establish an animal shelter advisory committee and provides for the purpose, membership of the committee. This is our group of council members, specifically Councilmember Lawson and Councilmember Big Horse. So which one of y'all is going to take the lead? All right, Nicky?
I'll talk to it. Yeah, this is, we talked about this, you know, there was a subcommittee that came up between me, Mary, and Cindy, and we presented all the recommendations, and this is just us now going through and getting all the ordinances updated. And so this, of course, is the animal shelter one. And I'll just read off the changes here. Increase the members from five to nine, alleviating the need to council board meetings due to lack of quorum. End of term change from June 1st to July 1st to be considered with all the others. So this is just, we do it all at the same time, all the committees. Next is add the training requirement in there. Require elections of a chairman, a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary. Presentations of any recommendations to council. And then have a presentation annually to the city council of what the committee's done throughout the year. And then the last, but absolutely not least, is post the agenda minutes and attendance on the committee page of the City of Saginaw website. And so those are the changes that we had talked about.
Council questions for Councilmembers Lawson or Big Horse? Mary?
My only concern is if we add four members, which I understand it's for the purpose of hoping we can have a quorum, is we had so few applications as a whole this past time that I wonder if that's doable.
I absolutely think it is because we've, we, if you look at the City of Saginaw, some of the Facebook pages and stuff, there's a lot of support for the animal shelter and things. And I think that if we do due diligence and we reach out and ask the citizens for help, that they'll stand up. Also, we're kind of, we need to do this so that we can have enough people there so we can have quorums, so we can have this committee. The committee hasn't been meeting because we haven't had a quorum, and the state law dictates that we should. And there's, there's actually a lot that we need to do to, to help our animal shelter. It's, as of right now, you know, if you try to drop off a catch, you can't because they're overfull. And, you know, this, as we talked during our subcommittee, should help alleviate that.
Okay. And maybe some of our new appointees that we just made, maybe they will be more likely to, you know, help make that quorum.
Yeah.
And I hope you're right that we can attract that many applicants.
I agree with Mr. Lawson. I think if we do a better job of promoting the need for this shelter, especially since we just approved putting the donation on our water bill, that gives this a little more visibility and I think a little more urgency. So I think, I think we can pull it off. Maybe not in the next week, but I think we can pull it off soon.
So that, also, I have a question. So if any of these approve approvals, will they go into effect for the next time or right now?
Well, I would think that it, once it gets approved, then the, Gabe and his group would then start working to get that. We would set a time of when to get it, and we would, we would get it moving.
In other words?
Because there's, there's an actual real need here.
Okay. So we could act upon these?
Yeah.
Recommendations?
Brad?
Yes, it would be effective immediately. Obviously, that doesn't mean that you have to make the appointments this evening.
Right.
But that clears any of the legislative hurdles.
Start the ball rolling.
Correct.
So we can put the notice out tomorrow?
Yeah.
If this passes, the need for this? Okay.
Anybody listening and watching online? Hey, heads up. We got some, need for some animal shelter volunteer folks, so please contact us. Any other questions?
Yes, sir, I do.
Oh, go ahead.
One of the things that Nick and I had talked about, especially since we passed the addition of the contribution through our water bill, in order to align the animal shelter board with the parks and the library and the beautification committee with the money that's donated, we're also wanting to put in a statement for the elected officials for this committee, also to include a treasurer, so they, even though they don't handle the budget, they can at least see what the budget is, and they can determine what their budget is. And like I said, that aligns with the other three committees that we have that receive donations from the water, from the water bill. And I talked to Brandon, and he said that is possible to do.
Right. I had a conversation with Cindy prior to the meeting. I had, this, that was suggested that they develop a budget and appoint a treasurer. And, you know, my initial thought was that's unusual when they don't actually set the budget you all do, and, you know, Kim is the one that manages the funds. But at the same time, there's nothing wrong with appointing a treasurer. Obviously, all they can do is, it's an advisory board, so all they can do is make recommendations to you all. They're non-binding, but there's no harm in it. So with, with your permission, if the motion is to add back in that they develop a budget and appoint a treasurer, I will just reinsert that language into the draft.
Other questions, comments, folk? If not, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the action regarding the amending of the animals, and when we do that, add the treasurer and the budget in it also.
Okay.
I'll second.
Cindy, second. Let's take a vote. All right, thank you. Great work, guys. Thank y'all. Item number 11. Consideration action regarding ordinance 2022-10, amending ordinance 2021.04, codified as Saginaw City Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Five, Boards and Commissions by amending section two dash one thirty-one governing the Diversity and Inclusion Committee of the City. Again, Councilmembers Lawson and Big Horse.
On this one, we also got, we talked about it, like I said, a couple times ago, meetings ago, and this is, again, just updating, updating the, the actual ordinances and subsections. So I'll just read it off as to what the changes we recommended is end of term change from June 1st to July 1st in accordance with the other committee appointments. Add a training requirement. Add members, added members must be registered voters of the City of Saginaw and shall reside within the City of Saginaw for at least six months prior to service. Require an election of a chairman, a chairperson, a vice-chairperson, secretary, and treasurer if needed. That one actually still has it on there. Presentation of recommendations to the council, and then a presentation of an annual report to, at the council meeting. And then post-agenda minutes, budget, and attendance as applicable to the committee website on the Saginaw City's website. And then the committee shall hold a meeting every quarter. And was we going to add the one back in?
No.
Okay, good. And this committee had been going on for, for about a year or maybe more?
January 21.
Yeah, January 21. And it really struggled to, to find its footing, and so what we're trying to hope for here is by assigning, you know, getting actual, a chairperson, vice-chairperson, add some more, you know, substance behind it and everything. And I know that Cindy has also volunteered to kind of be a liaison with them and go to the meetings and things like that to try to give them some guidance. I know that about two or three months ago, we did get a reach out that they originally was trying to work with the ISD, and that kind of fell through. So I think this is a huge opportunity, and, you know, we just need to give them some help and get it off the ground.
Council questions, comments?
I do want to make one little correction. Our term was actually the end of January instead of June. That may have been my mistake when I fed you that information, Nick.
Okay.
Yes, Mary?
The training, is that something that is in all of the ordinances for all of the committees?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's standard?
Yes.
And then I wondered about this statement about meeting dates and times shall not conflict with other city council or citizen board and commission meetings, and must be held at a time that is convenient for at least 75% of the regular members. That's not a requirement of any of the other boards or commissions, is it?
No. Where that came up is when we reached out to people who was on the committee, they was having meetings during the middle of the day, and a lot of people who worked couldn't come, things like that. So they said it needed to be changed, is what I was.
And we do have a conflict between the Parks Board and the Beautification Committee. They meet on the same night.
It just seems kind of strange that it would have that requirement for one committee and not the others.
Right. I mean, I'm not near and dear to it. It can be striked out. I mean, if y'all want, if you think it should be.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like, seems like the chairman of the committee can, you know, make sure he has it for them and make sure they're not conflicting and...
Yeah. Well, the reason, actually, the reason we originally went down that road, and it's, I know it's been a couple months since we started this, but went through it, was more than one, a few of the people who had originally been on the diversity committee said, well, they were having the meetings in the middle of the day. I got to work, and the majority of people do work. And they were, they were spelling, felt they were being excluded. And so this being a, could be a touchy subject. We thought, well, we need to put that in there to make sure that they're looking out, and they're picking a best time that fits people. And so people aren't feeling disapproving.
So, Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Lawson's point, we...
a time that is convenient for at least 75% of the regular members. That's not a requirement of any of the other boards or commissions, is it?
No, where that came up is when, when we reached out to people who was on the committee, they was having meetings during the middle of the day and a lot of people who worked couldn't come, things like that. So they said it need to be changed, so that was.
And we do have a conflict between the Parks Board and the Beautification Committee. They meet on the same night.
It just seems kind of strange that it would have that requirement for one committee and not the others.
Right, I mean, I'm not near and dear to it. It can be striked out, I mean, if, if y'all want.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't seem like, seems like the chairman of the committee can, you know, make sure he has it for them and make sure they're not conflicting and.
Yeah, well, the reason, actually, the reason we originally went down that road and it's, I know it's been a couple months since we started this, but went through it, was more than one, a few of the people who had originally been on the diversity committee said, well, they're having the meetings in the middle of the day, I gotta work, and the majority of people do work. And it, they were, they were felt in, felt be, they were being excluded. And so this being a, could be a touchy subject, we thought, well, we need to put that in there to make sure that they're looking out and they're picking a best time that fits people. And so people aren't feeling disinterested.
So, Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Lawson's point, we, we held meetings both during the day and in the evening, and it was difficult because it was a new committee to get the group together. We did have one in-person meeting, so keep in mind, we had been dealing with COVID through all of this. One thing I might, and we can talk about this at a later date, is I do think the committee wants some guidance as far as what they need to be working on. So you mentioned the project with the school district. The, the recommendation was to have a cultural heritage type event next year, which I think they're planning on, so be helpful to get your thoughts in the future.
Is the diversity committee working with the delegation from Gambia? This would be a perfect opportunity for them.
I agree, yeah, it'd be fun. And we're certainly working on getting them here to visit for training grain, so yeah, that's, that's a good project.
And I know there's the Laotian Festival, I want to say around May or June. I mean, there's, there's so much opportunity here.
Sure.
And that's why, you know, when Councilmembers Copeland and Lawson and I were talking, you know, I said, I'd like to be a part of that.
Sure.
Since Mr. Beasley is no longer part of that committee as an advisory role.
No, those are, those are good ideas.
But, yeah, Mayor, I think, I think that we just, we'll just remove that.
Well, if the intent is for the chairman of the committee in their first meeting that they have from now on to establish what that time and date would be, it kind of sounded like they were going to have to do this before every meeting.
Oh, no.
And call everybody and see if 75%.
No, that's not the intent.
So if they establish those ground rules at the very first meeting, then that's not a problem.
Right. Yeah, that was the intent. We actually had this discussion back two months ago, me, you, and Mary. But yeah, that's, that was the original intent.
Okay.
Essence of it.
So this is directed toward Pedro? Hi. Do we have a calendar that shows when all of these committees meet? Do we have that on the city website?
I believe it is.
I think, Mayor, Council, we currently, we have a calendar currently, three sets of them. One of them is a food truck, one of them is special events, and a meeting one. Sometimes some of the boards, for example, the animal one, does currently not have a set schedule to meet. Definitely that's something we could look into. We are currently redesigning the website, and one of those is to make sure the calendars are updated. Not everybody has access to the website. When I mean that, I mean the city staff liaisons of the boards. Some of them do, some do not, so they have to come to me to let me know, like, hey, we're having a meeting scheduled. So, yeah, that's definitely we can link into during the redesign to make it easier for city staff to put those on there as well.
Do we have an estimated time when the, that portion will be available?
So we're not qualified for the redesign until October. So from now till October, we are having conversations with our current website provider.
Okay.
It's because the contract, our current contract with the service provider doesn't allow us to have a redesign till October.
Okay.
So that's why, once the contract restarts, that's when the redesign begins.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, we have a way to filter events on there, like food trucks?
Yeah, it's currently filtered in, in three calendars. So if you scroll down on the main page, you can actually see all three calendars there. And you can just click on it and you'll be able to see.
Okay, and those calendars will be linked together at some point rather than maintained separately?
There, so the current way that the website provider has, we won't be able to converge them into one, just because the way it's set up. I, I would say that we are looking at potential other vendors that may have the ability, ability to do that, but, but again, we're, we're still in that process and it's actually something that we're in discussions with.
In the background information, the last bullet says added dissolution statement. What is that?
It's been removed.
Oh, okay.
All right, any other questions, y'all? If not, I will entertain a motion for item 11.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance number 2022-10, amending the ordinance number 2021.04 as stated.
Second.
Second. Let's vote. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
So Mayor, I apologize just for clarification, so there are no revisions necessary for this ordinance? Is that correct?
The one, on this one, none.
Not this one, okay, nothing on this? Okay, thank you, sorry.
Clean motion. All right. Item number 12, Consideration Action Regarding Resolution 2022-17, Declaring Intention to Reimburse an Amount Not to Exceed $4 Million for Certain Capital Expenditures With Proceeds From Debt. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item is a result of the desire by council expressed on the last meeting, I guess July 5th, to make improvements to the Highland Station Park. And so this will allow you to begin spending bond money before we actually issue bonds. The $4 million for bond, or for park improvements is scheduled for next summer. This resolution will allow you to begin spending and gives you a deadline of 18 months, so you should be fine as far as that goes. It's also tied to the next agenda item, which this is just giving you the authorization to spend money, but you actually need the money to spend, so it's not in, the $4 million we don't have in the bank. We'll be borrowing from the general fund and repaying it after the bonds are issued next summer. That's explanation of the next two items.
Questions for Kim?
Do we have an interest rate on that?
In the past, when we've done borrow, internal borrowing, we have not done that. It is possible if that is your desire. If you want to, if you want to pay interest to the general fund, then you certainly could. It will just mean there's less money to do the park projects.
Why would we want to charge ourselves? We're just moving money, basically, so.
Yeah.
It wasn't in the proposal, just a reply to the council member's question.
But we're not having to borrow this money, fortunately, so, at this point.
Didn't know, just asking.
And I heard the Parks Board has a nice big list ready to move with this money, right?
Yes.
I think they're going to spend fast, so that's good. All right, any other questions? Not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, I'm sorry, regarding Resolution 2022-17, declaring the intention to reimburse any amount not to exceed $4 million for certain capital expenditures, our parks.
Cindy, second. Let us vote. Thank you, Kim. Item number 13, Consideration Action Regarding Resolution 2022-18, Authorizing an Internal Borrowing Between the General Fund and the Capital Projects Fund for an Advanced Funding of Playground Improvements at Highland Station Park. Again, Kim Quinn.
So this is, again, just allowing the expenditures to be paid out of the general fund and the general fund will be repaid after bonds are issued.
Questions, Council? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move for the approval of Resolution 2022-18, Authorizing an Internal Borrowing Between the General Fund and Capital Projects Fund.
I'll second.
Second. Let us vote. All right, good job. Thank you, Kim. Item number 14, Capital Improvements Plan Update. For that, Trenton Tidwell, Kim Lee Horn.
Thank you.
We're saving on the ink, Charlie.
There you go, Ryan.
That, that colored ink costs more.
This year's update was a lot of fun since we skipped last year, and with the recent bond passing, we have a lot of fun projects to add to this, so hopefully this will be a lot of good news. We'll start with, wait, I forgot. We'll go through water, wastewater, drainage, community facilities, parks, and streets, and then I'll give a little update on where we're at with what we're calling the sump program and talk about where we're hoping to be in the next few months or not. So the water projects that we have going on right now are the Northwest Booster Pump and then the Belt Mill Booster Pump Station. So those are hoping to be completed in the next fiscal year. And then we do have a few other projects on the list, including the MacRae Boulevard 12-inch on the west side and a few other upgrades, including the Fort Worth Meter Station. And those are on the horizon for the water. We do have a handful of developer projects or projects that we would anticipate to be participated with developers. Those have been on the list for a while, not, not a lot of changes for those. The water average demand we have updated, you can see as predicted, the demand went up in 2020, 2021, and that is above, closer to where we would expect for a dry year. And then the maps have been updated, they're sideways. I was trying to max out the amount of pixels so you can see it a little bit better, but understandably, it's a little tough on those handouts, so I can provide PDFs of those if that's a little easier, if you wanted to see where they're located. Okay, moving to water wastewater, this has been trimmed down quite a bit. Y'all will be familiar with this project because you approved an IPO to begin design on the Fairmont 12-inch relocation under the silos, so we will start that. I believe the funding on that has been changed or pushed back, so we're actually expecting, we're hoping to build that in two years rather than using the Aqua Funds, but we are using the Aqua Funds for design. Andrew was sad that his sewer projects dwindled down to just one. And as expected, in a dry year, that demand has gone down and is below the normal year usage. Okay, for drainage, we are looking to advertise the East Cement Creek Phases, Phase 2, very soon, and we will hopefully construct that, all, all of it in next year. We were able to increase the limits of that because the fund balance grew, so we're actually getting a little more in that project. And then we'll complete design for Phase 3 over the next two years and then hope to construct that in 23, 24. We still do have a handful of projects that are along Saginaw Boulevard. We haven't decided on when we'd be able to tackle those projects, so they're just out there as improvements that are needed.
Are you with these estimated figures, since you don't even have them in until, like, 2026, 2027?
For the number four, number five for the drainage?
Yes.
Yeah, so those particularly would be not numbers that I would anticipate to hold if they were beyond what's shown on, like, 2023, 24. So most of these numbers are $20, $22. For the East Cement Creek Phase 2, I will say, since we are closer to design and expecting to bid that very soon, that's a number that, you know, we would expect to hold. Okay, for community facilities, we have a lot of exciting projects going on. ADA Transition Plan may not be one of those, but we are in the home stretch of that transition plan. Next year will be our last year of sidewalk evaluations, and then we'll be able to use that information along with the pavement management program to plan out which street should be rehabbed. The fire station is moving along and we're hoping, planning on that finishing next year. And then the combined library and senior center has started design and then would hopefully finish construction next year. Start construction next year. Yeah, that would be impressive, actually, if that was all done in one year. And then the recent discussion of the city hall rehabilitation, that new contract is shown under this year for the conceptual planning of that, usage for that space. And then hopefully that rehab is shown in 23, 24. We have listed on the future the animal shelter and a few other facilities.
So why is the animal shelter down there? When we talked about the city hall, we also requested that the animal shelter be done at the same time.
Yeah.
Or take priority over city hall.
You might recall at our previous meeting, Lee's working on getting a facility assessment for the animal shelter. So sequentially, we have to take care of next door, which accommodates public works, frees up the site of the existing shelter, and then the needs assessment, I think we're going to bring in the next meeting. So they'll give us a cost estimate.
I think we could show that in the, move it up from the future list. I guess it's still kind of future since we haven't really determined the magnitude of it, but as we are, if we're going to study it conceptually, then that money that's spent could be shown under animals shelter.
Well, again, I understood that the city hall renovations would be primarily this Again, there's no reason why we couldn't move to the recreation center or to the new library or other places if we anticipate a large crowd, because nine times out of 10, we don't ever fill this room, and if it is, it's for a very short time, kind of like tonight was. I think the animal shelter needs far more attention than this room does.
Okay. Yes, and I'm, I don't think this necessarily in, meant to intend like a priority list, but I do understand that it does, that's a higher priority and it sounds like.
Correct.
Lee's working on that. Okay, on the next slide, we have parks, and I want to mention Loris here as well. This is her favorite subject, parks. She's been helping me with these quite a bit. And I think we've got a few, as Kim just discussed, the Highland Station Park upgrades, but we've got a few other ones that might be earmarked for, the $4 million for the parks bond. One of those on the list is the food truck expansion. So we actually did a study recently to determine that adding one to the adjacent but south of the existing food truck park facilities, adding a pavilion would not negatively impact a floodplain there, and luckily, that turned out to be okay, so we, we feel comfortable moving forward with that. I'll mention another one that was, Randy asked us to look at, was the Kiwanis Veterans Memorial Park. So once that fire station, they're able to transition over to McRoy, if that's going to be repurposed, we're looking to move that memorial park perhaps next to city hall. Okay, streets, which is my baby, I and everyone on Facebook, we love the streets. Knowles is moving along great. If you haven't been able to go visit the W.J. Bowes intersection, it got off to a slow start and Randy and I were pretty nervous if they were going to make it, and we're, we're not there yet, so we, you know, we're hoping it'll be all completed. We're emphasizing that that's the expectation, to finish and open that intersection before school starts. But working with the contractor's been great, and I'll say, Bill Hurst is a huge asset to the city and the main inspector, and every, every time I talk to the contractor, they just say that he's great to work with. So the plan is to wrap up Knowles Phase 1 before next summer, if everything goes smoothly. McMahon's been working pretty diligently, so we expect that. The goal is to bid Phase 2 and have it start right after Phase 1 is complete. If possible, and I've been asking Kim if we can get creative, we would like to combine Phase 2 and 3 to make that a little more appealing for larger bidders and get better prices, but understandably, we're having to do what we can with the issuance of the bonds. But understandably, we're having to do what we can with the issuance of the bonds. So, we'll see what we can do with that. Also on the list, we have Old Decatur North. We are finalizing design on that after we've coordinated with Fort Worth and their water line. So, that will bid and then go to construction either late this year, early next year, calendar year, not necessarily fiscal year. And then also in the bond, we have McElroy Boulevard Phase Three and Phase Four. We will start design on those once we issue the money for those. And that'll be 23, 24. And then we'll hope to start construction on those within this five-year CIP, ideally whenever Knoll's Phase Two and Three wraps up, just to keep things rolling along. The one that's new to this list is Industrial and FM 156 Intersection. And that's the project that was prompted by Fuel City and we're partnering with Fort Worth, there's federal funding, and I think QT is involved as well, a lot of partners and Blue Mountain, kind of. So, our part in that project is shown for next year. Right now, we, you know, conservatively are showing half a million dollars, but we'll see what that ends up once we determine the franchise utility or the utility relocations. Then Thompson Sidewalks is a project that we received funding from the CDBG Fund. So, we applied and received $150,000. So, with the COs that were issued in 2020, we're able to redo all the sidewalks or install sidewalks along Thompson Drive from Longhorn up to Blue Ridge? No, up to almost near the City Hall. So, it'll connect all the way down.
Trent, I just have one addition. So, we got word, credit to Randy, we visited Commissioner Johnson a few months ago to request some assistance from Precinct Four for the Old Decatur North project. So, you know, Commissioner Johnson has been very good to Saginaw. That continues. He's going to contribute $300,000 towards that project. So, with escrow and other funds, we're really close to construction and there's a sidewalk component as part of that. So, we're going to try to get that to construction as soon as possible. And again, thanks to Commissioner Johnson.
Okay, the future list of projects, nothing is too new except for the Basswood Boulevard narrowing that we discussed probably several months or a year ago. And then the potential improvements at the two intersections, the four-way stops that are there currently. So, that's on the future list and could be incorporated in some sort of program.
Didn't we talk about improving the concrete, I guess, at Basswood and was it Highland Station, High Country?
The inside lane of Basswood? Yeah, we did discuss that and we do think in the future it will deteriorate because there's a gap between the two lanes. But as of right now, it doesn't seem to be a major issue. But it is something I think we should keep on the radar and eventually incorporate into the budget.
Several people have approached me and asked if we could make those bicycle lanes?
The extra pavement, whether on the inside or outside of Basswood?
Well, if we're going to tear out the inside, can we just make the inside bicycle lanes? I don't know, $3 million to make those lanes go away, what's the cost of doing nothing?
Right, restriping it, you know, instead of getting rid of it, yeah, we could look into that. I, it's a little unconventional to have bike lanes on the inside, but if we potentially shift the traffic to the inside and bike lanes on the outside, we could look at that. But still, we'd have to keep an eye on the pavement condition. We could consider that.
Because normally, bike lanes are on the outside, right? Not the inside?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to write that down. Were those bikers, just curious, sorry? Bikers that, are they, they're not children? They're not, okay. I was just thinking, usually, we don't encourage those to be on the street, we, you know, sidewalks. But if they are biking, cycling, then that would be an appropriate use.
If it's an adult, if it's an adult, it's against the law for them to be on the sidewalk.
Right. Okay. The last section I want to touch on is the Sump Program that I'd mentioned. This program would be funded through multiple buckets, including the street maintenance, the drainage potentially, and the Enterprise Fund, which is the Water and Wastewater Fund. We kicked this off, okay, and Sump, sorry, stands for Street and Utility Maintenance Program. I forget the, to define that every meeting. So, this was kind of kicked off by our pavement assessment and we've been working diligently with that. We've received a draft of the report, but we're still working on finalizing how we assess and how we rank the streets that we want to take care of first, both with a rehab or preventive maintenance. So, what I have here is just a couple of maps and it's hard to tell in black and white eyes, I'm sorry. The left is just which streets are asphalt and which streets are pavement, or I mean concrete, because we did notice a significant difference in conditions based off just that. And then on the right is the condition coded map.
So, on the left then, is red concrete or is blue concrete?
Blue is concrete.
Okay, good. And I'm assuming you're following the stoplot, red, yellow, green?
For the condition?
For the condition?
Yes, yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
And once we finalize, and actually, I was going to talk about this, once we finalize this report, Randy and I are hoping we can do a workshop with y'all to kind of talk more about the results from that assessment and what, how we want to utilize those in the Sump Program. Currently, with the budgets that we have in those three funds I mentioned, we would be looking at doing 400 linear foot blocks at a time if we did it annually, roughly, just taking bite-sized pieces, and that's not ideal. So, we want to discuss how we could potentially fund that, whether it be an annual increase in the budget or if it's some sort of bond program, however y'all would want to handle it. So, like I said, we'll be finalizing that report this month. And then we looked at what streets we would want to do first, and one that we thought was a no-brainer was continuing Knoll's Drive from the north side of Phase One, which is right just south of Park Center. It's either Normandy or Edwards, doesn't say. And taking that all the way up to Bailey Boswell. The map showed that that was another street that needed repair, and we think with redoing Knoll's, it makes a lot of sense. So, we're using the fund balance that we have to be very efficient with the fund balance that we have and stretch it to where we can take care of the rest of Knoll's so that the entire corridor is better for travel.
I think that'd be an excellent ideal to set that up, Randy, and let's have that. Of course, you know, we spend a lot of money to get the roads assessed, we're doing it every year, we need to roll it into our plan.
Mm-hmm. So, we'll take a look at, because the report kind of tells us how much we need to buy it off every year. Well, it tells us, you know, quantitative data as far as streets, but then we can update that to make sure it matches the prices that we see in Saginaw. And then when we put that on a yearly basis, we can talk with y'all about what we need to make that happen.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
If I'm remembering back the presentation we had, we're right at the cups of, we can handle it right now, but if we kick the can down the road very far, it'll become very cost.
Yeah, because it's not a linear increase in cost, it's exponential once it starts to deteriorate. Any questions? How much is a 400 feet? It really depends if you're doing the water and the sewer and the sidewalk as well, but roughly. Of just the asphalt or the entire project? With the current budget, if we're spending 500, 600,000 a year on that, that's about what we would anticipate, if you're redoing the water lines, the sewer lines and the sidewalks as well.
If that's what you want to do.
And that's the key, keep in mind, so the emphasis, the program is look at it holistically. So, if we're going to reconstruct, we're going to fix the water and sewer lines, everything. So, it's good for a good long time. I like that, deep down cleaning, yeah, let's call it that, deep down cleaning program.
Replacing.
Any other questions for Trent? We will look forward to more information on this in the future, when y'all get some more stuff together on the Sump.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Item number 15, presentation of proposed budget fiscal year 2022 to 23. Kim Quinn.
Very exciting.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So, last week, we received the last piece of the puzzle from Tarrant Appraisal District, which are our estimated certified values. And that's what we need to determine the requirements as far as the state for truth and taxation and calculate the tax rates and make the proposed tax rate and finish up the budget. So, that's why we usually wait until the end to do General Fund and the Debt Service Fund because Debt Service is almost entirely paid out of property taxes and General Fund is about a third. So, we're just going to jump right into it. So, General Fund, we'll start with General Fund revenues. Roughly, a third of the General Fund revenue is property tax, a third is sales tax, and a third are fees, other fees and charges. The proposed budget is based on a tax rate that is less than the voter approval rate and is also less than the de minimis rate. Because we have unused incremental rate from previous years, our voter approval rate is actually more than the de minimis rate. And that happened last year as well. As always, I try to be, we try to be conservative on our sales tax estimates. Our current year, we're still about 6% year-to-date over last fiscal year. And we are 16%, we're estimated to be 16% over than the amount that was budgeted last year. So, we're still doing great. I mean, nobody has a crystal ball. Who knows what will happen? I think the hope is that if there is a dip with a recession or people spending less, then the businesses that we know are coming, hopefully, will help offset whatever existing drop there may be. So, as we've always done in the past, we're conservatively estimating next year what we expect to collect this year. And that's been the rule of thumb that we've used. And that's about $6.7 million for sales tax. Franchise fees, I'm estimating up a little bit. That has to do partly with the weather, the extreme weather, people are using more energy, the franchise, the portion of the franchise fee that we collect, I expect to be up some next year. Court fees, we're estimating to be, court fines and fees about the same as the current year, as well as the recreation fees. This year, for many reasons, COVID and then the senior center taking part of the rec center, revenues were down. We, I think we estimated about to be 250,000, we're actually looking closer to 275. So, we're doing good. It's not as much as we have collected in the past, but we're making strides in that area. And so, I am estimating to be about 275,000 total for all of the fees collected, which is about the same as the current year. We're also anticipating building and permit fees to be higher next year, and that's just a function of all of the things that we anticipate coming. Rental inspection fees, we, if you recall, I think it was back in maybe March or April, we did a comprehensive fee survey. And so, all of those that we recommended are included in this proposed budget. One of those was the rental inspection fees going from $75 to $100 per year. And that's included. Council member Lawson asked about if it covers the cost of the program or not. We have about three and a half positions that are dedicated to that program. And so, it doesn't. We're short about 44,000 that the General Fund is paying that the fees are not covering. If you wanted to increase the fee to cover the cost, it would be $121.50 a year for a rental inspection fee per unit.
I think we need to do that because the citizens shouldn't have to bear that. The people who owns the rental property should have to bear any of that, so.
I don't recall this, I don't recall this survey off the top of my head. I don't.
This is not, the citizens are getting nothing out of this. So, and they're, you know, if this doesn't end up net neutral, then we're forcing our citizens to basically support this and support the people who owns the rental properties.
If that is the wish of council, then we can, we can make that adjustment in the final adopted budget.
Except everybody else, but me, I'm absolutely for it.
I mean, I wouldn't say the citizens aren't getting anything for this, they're getting hopefully safer, better rental properties and better neighbors. That's what it's for. Financially, no, they're not getting anything. Of course. Want to go to 100 and quarter? I'm fine with 100 and quarter. Everybody good with it?
My only concern about this is will people be honest about their rental properties? Because I know there's, you know, a few properties right now that they're trying to do what they can to not appear to be rental properties.
We try to catch as many as we can. I know utility billing, which is under Finance Department, we do a pretty good job of getting the information that we can at the time that a new service is either terminated or we, our service begins. And so, in that process, we either see a lease or closing statements. So, we have a pretty good idea. Now, residences that have service for many, many years, we may not catch that if it's not, if the owner continues to have the water in their account, in their name. But we work really closely with the inspections department to try to catch as many of them as we can. I'm not saying we have 100%, but I think we're pretty accurate.
All right, so, 125?
Okay. It's a small dollar amount, it doesn't really affect the budget, but we are increasing garage sale permits from $5 to $7, and that's pretty much just to cover the cost of the signs.
Didn't we mention something about 10? I thought we had talked about raising it to 10.
We can do that?
Is that what everybody wants to do? Mary? Okay.
Okay. Business alarm permits, this is, these are alarm permits through the police department. And we were, we had recommended increasing it from 15 to $50, just for the businesses. The businesses are the ones that tend to have more false alarms.
Again, does $50 cover the cost of responding to those false alarms or are there penalties assessed if they have?
There hasn't been an analysis on that.
Okay.
I know that you've been presented with the fact that the school district is going to have their own police department. The latest information is that they're not going to be ready to go. So, we have included in this budget three months' worth of reimbursement from the school district for the services that our officers provide to this, to the school district.
What if they're not ready at the first of the year? We just do a mid-year exemption, mid-year budget exemption and adjustment and put more money in or what?
Well, we would certainly, and I'm sure Russell will talk with them about a contract, but we will certainly charge them if it goes for more than three months.
So, I've talked to their police chief. He has all of his applications in place, he's doing his background now, so he anticipates being fully functioning on October 1. They did ask for that buffer period just in case he didn't have all his folks hired. So, he's anticipating having all his positions filled, at least by mid-October. And so, us keeping folks around should they fail to meet that goal, then.
How does the SRO support staffing police officers in Saginaw?
I'm sorry?
How does? How does reimbursing them for the SRO, or them reimbursing us for the SRO, how does that affect our staffing for Saginaw?
So that was one of the conversations I had with their chief is if our staff, if our staffing continues to, to be as low as what it is now or drop further, then we'd probably be looking at pulling those SROs back at the end of contract instead of extending them. Right now, we're in a pretty good spot as far as potential applicants. We've got a number of applicants that are certified right now that are going through our background process. So I think we're going to alleviate most of those shortages in a pretty short period of time.
Because like I said, my concern is I don't want to shortchange us to help the ISD. I mean, I know we want to work with them, but Saginaw first.
Right, and I think the school understands that. We've delayed the start time for SROs because of our staffing shortages. So normally, our SROs would already be in the schools when teachers came back. But this year, we're actually delaying them until the 15th of August, which is two days before the start of school. That's under the, the contract terms that we have, so, you know, we've signed that contract. It doesn't expire until October 1st. That's kind of our goal, is to fulfill that contract until October. If our staffing changes to the negative, then we will not offer that extension to EMS/ISD. But that's, that's not the anticipation at this point. And so we've got a number of applicants that looks like they're fixing to come on, that are already certified, so we can get them through FTO and get them on the street pretty quick, which will alleviate some of our staffing issues. We've got three, two of three folks identified right now for Academy that starts in October. And so we'll get those folks in October. We've already reserved our three spots there. So we're working on another applicant that will be pretty, right now, looks pretty strong as being the, the third person for that Academy position. So we should go into October with three people in the Academy, which will take about four and a half months to get them through the training. And we've got the three folks right now that are certified, and we're doing background zone. There's a fourth one that'll become available in November that's currently deployed with the reserves that's applied with us. So we're sitting in a pretty good spot. My, my issue right now is going to be have enough trainers to train everybody. And so we may have to delay some of these hirings just because of our capabilities to train folks and get them on the streets.
Other income is estimated to be down. Other income is just, it's a miscellaneous, it's miscellaneous. There's nothing specific in it. The biggest piece that we put in there is about $25,000 a year for our P-card rebate. So with Chase, they, we get a rebate based on the amount that we use it. But other than that, it's just like copiers, the rental that the phone companies use to, for the tower space that they use for the antennas. It's just a hodgepodge. And it just, in general, it's trending down, and so that's why we're estimating to be down a little bit. We've got American Rescue Act, American Rescue Act funding, so, and this is really just an accounting. It's showing it as a revenue for the three large-ticket items, the one-time items that we plan to fund next year with the ARPA funding. It's actually part of our general fund. It's just reserved right now. We're not inclu, we're not counting it as income, even though we have the actual cash that we're reserving. And those three items, and Jennifer's going to go over the one-time items a little bit later on, but they're listed here. If you recall, we talked about ARPA funding, I think at the beginning of the budget process. We have a little over $3 million currently, and we anticipate by the end of summer, really any time now, the additional $3 million for a total of about $6,250,000. And so these projects listed here, the police department roof repairs, the, I'm an emergency generator at the recreation center, and then partial funding for a fire engine is going to come from, is proposed to come from ARPA funding.
Do we know what those numbers are for the ongoing expenses?
Ongoing expenses for?
Is that what you're talking about right now?
Yeah, I'm fixing to start through the ongoing expenses.
Okay. I do have a question about revenues, though, before we move on.
Okay, sure. What do you've got?
Under the parks, Trent was just talking about the food truck expansion, and it looks like we're looking at $300,000 for that, just the expansion portion of the food truck. What's our revenue from food trucks' sales?
I don't think we're collecting revenues yet. I think that was the decision that council made, that there were no permits going to be collected to try to build up that business. So to my knowledge, there's, there's no revenue.
No, 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 no. I thought we only did it for like three months, not ongoing.
Keith, do you know?
I mean, why would we spend $300,000 to make nothing in return?
We think it would be great if we charged them, because when we first opened the facility, we were begging food trucks to come there, and food trucks didn't want to come, quite frankly, not because of anything we did, but we weren't a proven commodity for them to, to make money. Now we are, and when you're getting Cousins Lobster and people that are calling us, saying, hey, we want to be there, find us a spot. And we have 120, 130, 140 food trucks that want to be here. We're even moving food trucks and having them set up at the, at the aquatic center just to, to give other opportunities. So yeah, we're all for charging them something.
Again, I thought that was a three-month period just to get us past the hump, and then, maybe I remember incorrectly, can we look into that?
What were we going to charge them? I forget.
I think that was just for the permit, because that, Larry's not here, so I can't ask him, but they have to get a permit through the city, and I think we waived it. It's been two, three years, so I can't remember.
Again, it was supposed to be a short time. This was not supposed to be continuous.
But if we charged them to, for space, every, most, I'll say most, every other food truck park, they, they charge for that, and.
Yeah. And we were going to charge them for the utility?
We can certainly look at that. Not prepared to answer the question right now because I don't have the information in front of me. I know.
Telepathy.
I told you.
No, you haven't. You guys have done a great job with food truck park. But again, I don't see investing any money if we're not getting any revenue. And I'd like to go back and check and see if that was supposed to be a long-term thing or a short-term thing, if we can. And then, we need to start generating some money off of this.
We're all for it.
Thank you.
Let me also point out, it, it's on the schedule, but it, under the parks CIP. But the only thing included in the budget at this point is the Highland Station Park improvements.
But it's still a thing of the future.
Yes.
We don't need to keep, we don't need to keep taking away from the citizens. We need to start getting some money back from them. We get money, sales tax from everybody else.
I had a question. I had this mark earlier.
It's, I'm getting older, so things come to me really slow, and I'm not wearing my glasses, which don't help my brain, but still. It's, I think there was, there was a, we, we waived it for, you have to have a permit to be able to sell in the city. Not just at, not at food park, but just to be able to sell in the city. And I believe we waived it for whatever, three months for that. That, that may be different than what you're, you're thinking where, and what we're all in favor of is charging food trucks of, you know, say the six that are going to, I don't know how many is going to be there tomorrow, but the six that want to be there tomorrow, they have to pay a, a fee to be able to be there, not just have a permit within the city. And I think that's what we waived for three, three months or whatever it was, and then, but actually charging them to be there is a totally separate thing that we don't have in place that we're in favor of.
Especially with the hookups.
Exactly, yeah. Tarrant County, that's totally separate. They have to do that wherever they are in Tarrant County, yeah.
Let, let's see what the market is, market rate is, what others are charging. Let's go for it.
We'll do some research on that.
Yeah, I had, had this marked when it was gone over on the other one. And what intrigued my interest is, me going back and remembering when we went over the long-term parks plan, this wasn't even on the list of even future things. So how did it bump off everything else that was on the long-term top parks plan?
My hearing aid was not working. I didn't hear the question. I'm sorry.
So a couple of months ago, we went over the long-term parks plan, right? This wasn't even on the list, but yet it's here and none of the others. I'm just trying to figure out why we would be doing something for the parks that wasn't even on a plan that we asked citizens and stuff to look at.
Bright, do you have an answer? Do you have the answer to this?
I did push for an expansion to the food truck park and mostly for the farmer's market.
Right.
I thought the building was needed for the farmer's market. The benefit of that was the expansion of food truck park and its success. I don't know that, I don't know why it wasn't included in the questions to the citizens. It's been the talks in the parks board for well over a year.
Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
So that expansion isn't in this year's budget anyway, is it? The food truck park expansion?
No, it's not, it's not part of the proposed budget.
It's a, it's a non-issue for this purpose.
Pardon me?
It's a non-issue for what we're discussing right now. It's not in this year's budget.
Correct.
Correct.
The expense, but we can work on the revenue.
Right, but that $300,000 isn't coming out of this year's budget, correct?
Correct. It's not in the proposed budget at this time.
All right, Kim, keep going.
Okay. So I was going to, before we start talking on the expense side, then, I was going to briefly explain. We taught, I have a list of ongoing, and then we have a list of one-time. And so I want to reiterate the structurally sound, structurally balanced budget. So we want to make sure that our ongoing revenues cover our ongoing expenses. And then when we say an expense is a one-time item, those are things that are okay to use our excess fund balance for, right? Because those are one-time things we can use a one-time revenue source for. But for the ongoing things, to pay salaries and things that we know are ongoing, we don't want to spend a one-time revenue source for something that's going to be recurring, right? You don't want to be buying your groceries with your savings account. You want to, you want to be using things that are, you know, are going to be able to sustain whatever the expense is. So that's why we, that's why we have them broken out like that. So our ongoing, our ongoing expenses, I have them listed here. We'll go down them, and I'll elaborate on anything that you want to know about. But I also want to mention, I think this is the 10th budget that I've done here now. And I have to say that we have done, this, this city has done a really excellent job over the years of keeping the budget from creeping up. You know, this year is the first year that we really had to look hard at line items that just because of inflation, we had to increase. And this is the first year, usually the depart, the departments are able to find some room within their budget to accommodate small increases here or there. But this year, there, you are just going to see some line items that have to increase. And that's just, that's just part of this budget is, is the inflation factor. Now, we did not do an across-the-board inflation factor and just increase everything. We really looked at those line items that, where it was necessary. And you'll see that here as we go. The positions that were funded mid-year are, obviously, you've got a full-year funding for them for next year. We, I talked about, we've added cost centers for emergency management and communications. So when I say added a cost center, instead of the emergency management function being part of the fire department, we just moved those line items and the one position that is responsible for emergency management just into a separate set of accounts to more easily track those. And the reason that we did that is partly to do because we share those expenses with the city of Lake Worth, and it's just easier for us to compare that we're funding equally. And then on the communications cost center, that's, we didn't have a whole set of accounts, but we've just set up a separate cost center just so we can start tracking that. When the position was added and Pedro came on, then, you know, there used to be functions that Keith did, and there were some expenditures that we paid out of it administration. There were some expenditures, expenditures we paid out of the community services. And so this is just trying to consolidate those into a separate cost center. And obviously, Gabe's been saying since, since the very beginning of the budget process that salaries were the highest priority, and so there is an adjustment for all of the positions. I say adjustment, an increase of 5%. We also know that health and dental insurance is increasing. We have budgeted a 7% increase for that. I know that Melanie and Gabe and Lee are working with our benefits consultant to determine exactly how that's going to work as far as the different plans that are available. But overall, we're budgeting a 7% increase. How that's going to look, we don't know at this point.
Yeah, so just one real brief cost, our benefits broker has been tremendously effective. So they negotiated an extension with Cigna, a third-year extension at 7%. You might recall the past two years, we've had a fixed cost. So over the past three years, you're looking at, you know, 2.3% increase, which is tremendous credit to the departments in, in being, educating their people to use the right services, so not doing a lot of emergency room trips and things that are high cost and that sort of thing. We're going to have to pass these costs down, which is difficult to the employees. And then another, we're still going to work with the broker and get the particulars, but we're going to have to increase the out-of-pocket maximum, which hate to do, but we all have a budget we have to live in with, and.
Oh yes, go ahead.
The 5% salary adjustments, which I am totally in favor of. But I'm just curious, because I've, I've read different articles that different cities are, are using a different method to incentivize being able to keep their staff, which is one-time payments, which one particular city was going to make a payment in September and one in October, and then maybe four months later, just one-time payments. And I was just curious, was that considered, and what are the pluses and minuses for both types of incentives? Which, do we think this 5% is a better in the long run than that other type of compensation?
So I think that in light of the Social Security Administration's cost of living increase for retirees for 2022 is 5.9%. We're still waiting to see what that increase will be for 2023. It's probably at least going to be 5%. I think everybody here could tell you how difficult it is to find people. That goes for every business in town. You know, you may recall our, our lifeguards, we had to increase our lifeguard salary, hourly salary by 30% just to, to hang in the ballpark. I think anything incentive-wise for our employees would be well-received and to the, be to the good. I know the, the chief, you know, we're down, we have nine police officer vacancies. Hopefully, we can get those filled soon, but we're in a tough and competitive labor market. I've shared some articles with the council for the benefit of the public. You know, little old Azul, Texas, is now their starting officer salary and starting firefighter salary is about 5% higher, which is crazy. You know, they're a smaller, more rural town than Saginaw, and it's just a tough, tight labor market.
I'd like to see some more specific data on that type of thing, and, and multiple cities compiled in a single spreadsheet instead of over across several emails through several weeks. That would be a lot easier for me and probably somebody like Nick, who likes to look at things collectively rather than having to go back and look things up.
Yeah, we, we asked all our department heads to, you know, kind of prepare some, some comparable positions, so, yeah, that's.
And the other thing is that I was looking at Chief Howell's report that he's talked about the police department vacating their positions, and it looked like the vast majority of those did not leave for more money to other police departments. They left for various other reasons. What is the city doing to look at retaining its employees rather than having them go away? If they're not leaving for more money, what is the problem, and what are we doing to retain those people?
As far as the police department goes, just because they don't.
As far as the police department goes, just because they don't go into another police agency, don't think they're not leaving for more money.
Well, that's true.
We had, you know, one go to the oil field making close to, I think it was thirty thousand more than what he makes for us due to overtime and things of that nature. So for him and his family, that was the best move for him. The most recent officer we lost went to the Eagle Mountain School District. He's been with me for five years and he made almost a ten thousand dollar pay increase by going to the school. It's, they're leaving for more money, but you know, there's a stigma that's going on in law enforcement right now that makes it really hard to attract and keep people in this field just because of the scrutiny that's going on.
Right.
With citizens, with media, with, with such. And so, yeah, I don't have a good answer for that. I don't think there's any department that currently has a, a good answer. You know, what they're doing is throwing money at it, you know, trying to incentivize people to come and stay based off salaries, but there's a lot more that goes into play with that. And, and I think we're going to continue to see that being a, a difficult position to hire, you know, in, in our patrol services, just because people aren't willing to undergo the scrutiny that's, that's going on there. So when our available resources are, are reduced by twenty-five percent and then you got folks that are retiring now with just twenty years instead of staying, you know, thirty years, forty years, like we have in the past. You, as far as that retention goes, I don't know what the best answer is there. We're looking at all avenues. I'm, I'm reviewing literature from departments all across the nation that are seeing success with retention programs and trying to see what we can do to implement those here.
And again, retention programs is something good, but it seems like the only thing that the council is hearing is, we need more money. And I want to see, I'd like to see more than that.
So I'll, I'll brag on our apprentice program, you're aware, we're, we're a finalist for a statewide award, which I'm really proud of. I think that's our best, long-term, our best, and most viable option to get good quality people is to try to work through youth programs, through apprentice programs. Our interns have been tremendously successful. We've plugged many of them into full-time positions. What we're finding in, in public works, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head the last time we've hired a certified person in water and wastewater. What we have to do is hire generally younger people, hope that they stay and hope that they get their license, because there's just so much competition. So I, I think we're doing a good job exploring all angles and we can certainly get more information for you.
Mary, I wanted, a minute ago you asked about a one-time payment versus a thing I wanted, I didn't hear anybody address that, so I wanted, because I'm a little bit familiar with that. The, the thing about getting a bulk payment is it, it's a one-time thing, you usually get a big chunk of cash, but what ends up happening, and let's say we're a private company, is over time, the per, that's just one-time payment, over time their salary doesn't increase. So they get out of, out of whack within what they call the bands and layers. And so then three or four years goes along, you're just giving them, let's say a thousand dollars, okay? Then what happens is other companies are giving them three, four, five, however much percent raise, so they get out of sync with the industry. And then what happens, that company then all of a sudden has to chunk a, a big amount of money to get them back in sync. And so it's usually, the, private, private sector is determined that that's not good to do that that a way. What, what, and I don't know about, but in the private sector, it's usually a combination of, of a salary increase along with like a bonus, in which I think we, we gave, we authorized a bonus this year, right?
We gave retention bonus.
Yeah, yeah, so we give a bonus. So it's usually considered the, the standard is to, to give a little of both and that, that's kind of what we're doing.
And.
Would you say that your staff would prefer, and it's a bigger incentive, gives a raise rather than these particular, you know, one-time payments?
I think to be competitive in the market, especially in this environment, you need a cost of living raise based on inflationary factors. You know, the council approved and, and I can speak on behalf of all staff, the, the one-time payments for staff earlier in the year, which was well-received. Not two months later did Tarrant County come out and say, hey, we're going to do several thousand-dollar retention bonus. Again, this demonstrates the, the problem. As opposed to private sector entities, there are core positions we cannot go without. So we can't say, the chief can't say, you know what, today, because we can't meet minimum staffing, we're not going to take any calls. Or Chief Spears can't say, uh, we're going to let that one burn. So it's just not how it works. So it's, it's really difficult. I think that, again, our, our path to success in many departments has been working with, with some young people, people that have ties to the area and trying to keep them here. So we're going to keep doing that.
Yeah, one thing to remember, you know, we're not only dealing with money, though money is important, it's tangible, it's easy to measure. We think we offer good benefits here, we think we offer a quality of life and a, an environment that's, has a lot of advantages over, over cities. But if we, if we pay ten percent less than somebody else, you're going to run into that, that that just can't be overcome. That's what we've seen. In some of my travels this summer, not that I travel a lot, I saw a billboard in a city not much bigger than ours that had a police office on it and said, now offering five thousand dollar sign-on bonuses for police officers. The city's larger than ours, but it wasn't that much larger than us, so. And that was in the state of Washington, so it's all over. It's not just us.
They have a higher tax base than we do.
A little bit higher, yeah, but not, not a lot. And you, you can't, you can't say that we're, you know, that we can't afford to pay these folks, and we can. Is it a little bit more money? Sure. But to keep the folks, to get the quality of folks we have, I mean, I brag on how good our staff is, but if we're losing people all the time, you know, we, we go without stuff that we need to do, police officers, et cetera. So that's why salary adjustment is pretty much the cost of doing business these days. This is a short-term thing, it's, it's a lot of folks are dealing with it, private and public, so it's not just us. Please don't think it is just us.
And keep in mind the growth arc of our city, we're growing and we have more people to serve. So we've got to stay competitive with our current employees, but also keep in mind of the future, which is why, and we'll move forward here pretty quickly, we've been able to accommodate every request except new positions. The rationale being, let's take care of our existing employees and existing budgeted positions, and then mid-year, as we have done in past years, we'll look to add new positions. And hopefully PD can get staffed up and we can get, you know, some vacancies filled.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make it clear that I think we need to do whatever we need to do to keep our staff. And, you know, I was just curious if, if there was more than one method to do that.
And I agree with you, but sometimes it takes more than just money. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can because we also owe it to our citizens to manage our finances fairly to them as well as just, because they're suffering as much as we are, even though they, a lot of them work for the private sector, a lot of them, you know, have fixed incomes, we owe it to them. So this is, this is a difficult thing to balance and the more information that the staff can provide the council, more than one option, I think is going to be service better in the long time, the whole community.
Yeah, we're, we'll get that for you.
All right, Kim, keep going.
Okay. We've got increases in our insurance provider, we use Texas Municipal League for property liability and workers' comp, so we're seeing some increases there. And then across the board, we have training expense increases. And a lot of that is just due to the fact that we have a lot of new people and, you know, it's, we have to pay to train them and to get them up to speed and, and what they know. It's not as many old-timers that know what they're doing, but, so that's, that's an important investment, I think, in these employees that we're bringing in. We just have some other miscellaneous line item expenses, election expense. We partner with Tarrant County and the cost of elections is just going up as well as, as, as legal advertising. So these are the advertisements that we have to put in the paper that are required and the cost of that is going up, as well as we're just doing more of it with all of our rezonings, replattings, those kinds of things, we all, we're required to do legal advertising and so we are seeing an increase in that area. We also have credit card transaction fee increase. Mr. Lawson had a question about this. So for courts and permits, when people come in to make a credit card purchase or pay by credit card, there is a transaction fee of three-point-five percent and we do pass that on to the customer. On the utility billing side and just general fund side of it, we pay about a two percent fee is what it equates to be. And it's about, I've got estimates here, about fifty-two percent of our customers pay online or use a credit card draft and that's mostly for utility. So the utility fund reimburses the general fund for this. I think that it's just a fact of life that more people like to pay online or use a credit card draft and so that's why the fees are going up. I think that the reason it was first established and we didn't pass that cost on to the customers was just because we were encouraging that. It's a big help for staff, you know, if those customers are doing it on their own and, and at home or, or online, then it's just less customer interaction that we have to have. I think that the two percent is a reasonable fee. I mean, we can look at passing that on to the customers, but at this point, it's built into the rate, it's built into the utility rate, frankly.
Say, Kim, can you back up a couple of items, the election expense?
Sure.
How can the election expense go up when everybody that's manning it's a volunteer?
Well, we, we part, we contract with Tarrant County and I know, Janice may be able to answer this better than I do, but I know there's the cost of the machines. I don't know, are they volunteers or do they get paid?
Are you, are you saying Tarrant County doesn't basically own their own machines?
They own, yes, but we contract with Tarrant County, they have to pay the judges and the workers. So while there may be some volunteers that help with the election, those people are paid employees and they have to pay them for the day, every day of early voting and then they have a different group that are actually there on the, on election day. Our general election this past May, the estimate is around eight thousand. That doesn't include, we have to have it translated into Spanish and Vietnamese per the state, and then that doesn't include what we paid to have the notices in the paper. Our special election for the runoff is probably going to be closer to about twenty-two thousand. You have less to share it with, so the expense is a little bit more. It's, it's probably sounds like a lot, but if we had to, we would have to have more employees to be able to do it ourself, because you're going to have to have the equipment, you've got to have the training, you've got to find the judges, the workers. So there's a, a lot to it if, if we were to try to do it ourself. Does that help?
Has there been any studies done? I know early voting, especially the non-presidential years, the voter turnout numbers are pretty low. We have what, ten days of early, early voting?
I believe so, yes.
Has there been any study done to reduce that maybe to five days and save all these cities money?
That would be.
Especially with the low turnout?
Something that we, we contract with the county, so we have to do however many days. And I don't know if that's set by the state, I would have to look at that and see if that's, they may determine how many days. I would have to look at that and see.
Okay, because it just seems like, you know, somebody needs to do a study on that and save everybody, even the county money.
Yeah.
If the turnouts are low.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out on that and get back to you.
Thank you.
All right, keep going, Kim.
Okay.
We got a long way to go.
So the next slide in this, this answers the question about what, what are, what else are we doing besides paying employees? We've had budgeted, I think it was in fiscal year nineteen-twenty, an employee program, employee appreciation, we budgeted ten thousand dollars because of COVID and one reason or another. That money's been in the budget, but we haven't spent anything. The HR is asking for an additional five thousand this year, which would bring it up to fifteen. And so I imagine that these are programs like what we did tonight. You know, some of it doesn't cost money, but some of it, some of the programs will require funding. And so this is another way that we can try to retain people by showing them that we appreciate them and having those different kinds of programs, so employee picnic or, or whatever it may be.
So what you're saying is we've had it for three years, but we haven't used any of it?
That's correct. The first year was, was COVID and then we still had social distancing and things, so there haven't been programs for this funding yet.
A lot of private companies have this, as they call it, use it or lose it, so they penalize the manager if he doesn't, you know, because they put that in there as a service to the employees and to increase morale and if the manager doesn't do it, then, you know, so, you know, doesn't do no good to allocate it if you're not utilizing it.
Well, the.
I'm a department, if I have to track COVID and try to keep the citizen, the employee safe, then that's more of it. We may have some incentive, quarterly incentives that we cut off because one department's about sick, so we don't have to go all together. So that's, so.
But we, we've got things scheduled this year?
Yes. I mean, we're going to start in October, July, the last quarter of this year, we had a lot of, some other departments we didn't have this year, so also, we're looking at appreciation, thinking about, thank you.
Isn't Community Link taking care of that? I thought they handled that for us.
It's not in Community Link's contract.
I thought, because the chamber took care of that, I thought Community Link was taking over that sort of thing.
You mean employee, you mean employee assistant or employee appreciation?
Employee appreciation.
I think the chamber ever did that.
The chamber did?
I thought the chamber did.
Employee appreciation for the city sagging?
Oh, like the award, the employee of the year or something like that?
All employees.
When we had the banquet out at the Speedway?
That wasn't the chamber?
What the chamber had was like out at the Speedway and different places was to recognize the business, business of the year, employee of the year, volunteer of the year, that sort of thing. So it wasn't, they did recognize an employee of the year, but it wasn't anything that, that all of our employees were a part of.
Okay, thank you.
We have funding in there for some work, workplace training videos. These are videos that are required perhaps for everybody. I know we do a, a cybersecurity training that's required and so that's what's going to fund those kinds of training that multiple people need to participate in. There's also a funding in there to increase the holiday gift card for employees from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. There's a thousand dollars in there for a volunteer banquet. I think we did that a couple of years ago and, and I think it was the mayor that requested that we have funding for that as, on an ongoing basis. The funding in municipal court budget is increasing in, for the prosecutor, and it's not an increase in cost, it's just an increase in hours as we're catching up with the backlog. There's just been more hours required of, of her. And then in the municipal court, that is an increase in her contract. She's been here for more than, than ten years and the salary has stayed the same. So we have plugged in a five, it's, it's not included in her contract yet. Her contract's, I think, up for renewal in January, but we're in, we've budgeted a five percent increase for her as well. And it may not be her, but whomever judge we, we contract with to do that. In the fire department, their, it's, their system is obsolete and they're going to have to change to a new records management system. There's an ongoing increased cost related to that. There's funding in there for the fire department employee banquet. In the police area, we have the increased cost of lab fees, analysis fees for criminal investigations, CID. And then there's also funding in there for the honor guard, and I think Russell can elaborate on that. I think this was for some uniforms and.
Yes, we started our honor guard about two years ago. It's a specialized uniform that they wear and, you know, we ask for a commitment of three years to the honor guard, but our honor guard is now being used at all graduations for the police academy at TCC. And we do official funerals and things of that nature for anybody that really kind of requests that. Some of the officer involved, guests that we've had during COVID, our honor guard has represented the city in those applications as well. And those fees are for those uniforms specifically, so it's a patent shoe, it's a jacket, a white shirt and kind of a, just a real specialized uniform to make them stand up.
Appreciate it. I didn't know what an honor guard was, I asked the question.
Yes. Yes. And we, we send at least one representative, normally two, to every law enforcement funeral that's here in our region. And we're, we try to send them a little bit further out, but for sure, here in our region, we send at least one, if not two reps to every one of those funerals.
The, the, we, we are funding the fire department banquet, employee banquet, so we're funding the same amount of money for a police department employee banquet. There's some, a small increases in the subscription fee for the public safety radio system for the two consoles that are at the police department. There's an increase in building maintenance. This is under public services. This is, for a variety of reasons, cost of supplies is going up. Also, the adding items to, that we're going to maintain at the aquatic center. I think everyone's learned that putting off maintenance or ignoring issues has been detrimental, and so this funding is to, is to help that. So for those reasons, yes, we are increasing some areas as well as just the cost of those supplies are going up as well.
So this building maintenance, thirty-eight thousand, that can cover all of our buildings' maintenance?
No, no, that's in addition to what we currently have budgeted on building maintenance. That's a line item increase.
Okay. Can, yeah, I, I was, I was extremely impressed there.
No, 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 no. We've got, I don't want to, I don't want to say off the top of my head. Let me tell you what the total line item will be. So that'll bring it under, just under two hundred thousand dollars for all of the facilities. It still does not sound like a whole lot compared to all of the facilities that they maintain.
You can still be impressed.
Yeah, still.
There's increased funding for sprinkler repair and maintenance. I think we started that some this year. The idea is that we're going to be proactive instead of just hitting the ones that are broken. We're, at the beginning of the season, they're inspecting it, and I think at the end of the season, they're inspecting it and, and doing, being proactive about the sprinklers. The next four line items are in public services as well, and this is just the, in, in order to maintain the same service level, the cost of these supplies are just going up. Concrete costs more, asphalt costs more, and the parts for signs and signals cost Same true for IT. The cost of computers and servers and all of that are increasing as well. This last item under IT, the nineteen thousand, six hundred dollars, that's something that we need to be doing. We're required to keep backup of all city email accounts, I guess for public information requests, and we're currently, we hadn't been doing that, and so there's a cost to that. It's a lot of, lot of data.
So is our backups on the cloud or are we doing them ourselves through rates?
Oh, I was going to ask, is that also included for preventing city municipal catastrophe? That's been made in the issue. Probably.
Yes, we started, when we had an incident, it's been more than a year now, we started doing our own full backups, and that's to the cloud. I don't know specifically, but I would imagine this is true. This is the contract that we just talked about. The contract inspector increase is included in the proposed budget as well as a contract planning services. There's an increase in parks line items for parts and supplies, and again, this is just due to the increased cost of materials that are necessary, and that includes the fall protection that they put under the, the material they put under the playgrounds. There is a inspector and training that will be, I guess, promoted to a full senior inspector. They have to get certain licenses, and so that's the cost of this. This is not just salary. This would be salary, benefits, and certification pay for that individual.
And Kim, correction, that's for two, that's two people, not just one.
The shelter attendants at the animal shelter, at animal services, the part-time employees are moving from twenty-five to twenty-nine hours. That's long overdue. They're really, I think, the only part-time positions that still weren't at twenty-nine hours. Just like in some of these other parks areas, the cost in, for fleet maintenance, obviously we all know fuel has, has increased. A few years ago, we cut the fuel budget, and now we need to restore that. Maintenance, tires, parts, all of those things are increasing. In economic development, there are some line item increases there. One of them is for the subscription service that we use for a sales tax database, and then I think it was dues for the Fort Worth Chamber of Commerce.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
In economic development, I looked at the specific details of all the different costs, and I noticed that the building improvement grant was going to, to decrease. So do you have an explanation for that? Keith?
Only that we just haven't had as many coming. We had, we had a lot come in early on. We've, we've, the council has administered twenty-six grants so far, and just the amount that we budgeted, we're very hopeful. We could, we could keep it at that amount and have a surplus at the, or have extra at the end, but we're just cutting it back a little bit.
But if we ended up having a lot of applications and we looked like we were running out of budget for that, we do have money within economic development that we could move over to that budget? I just didn't want us to run out.
Yes, there are, there are line items that we have in there for economic development incentive, and then we recently paid off, we made the last payment for an incentive to a restaurant that came, and-
Applebee's.
I didn't know if we were supposed to say who it was.
Or.
Yeah. So we, so we've, we've, we've just moved that to a different line item, so that, that is also available for economic development incentive. You could certainly move it from one line to another if we had a whole lot of building improvement grants that we wanted to fund or that you chose to fund. Thank you. And then we also have an increase in the communications area, and this is kind of like having to back up all of the emails. We also need to be backing up the social media, social media archiving, and there's a cost to do that. So that is a quick list of our ongoing expenses, and now Jennifer, our finance manager, is going to go over the list of one time.
Thank you, Pam. Mayor and council, I'll just go over this pretty quickly. These are going to be the one-time expenses for the proposed budget. The first one is going to be a fire engine replacement for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Eight hundred thousand dollars of that is going to be actually savings from construction for the new, from the new fire station, and then a hundred and fifty thousand is going to come from ARPA funds. The next item is going to be security fencing for fire station two. It's going to be kind of similar to the PD, because it's only partially fenced right now, so they're looking at maybe electric gated access for staff safety and facility security.
Have we had any incidences or anything? I mean, usually, everybody loves the fire department. I mean.
As far as something that's been taken, fortunately, no. We've had people obviously show up in the station that aren't supposed to be there. Particularly, that happens during the summer, we try to keep the doors open. We try to close them when we leave. If the door malfunctions and it stays open, we're gone, and the doors open, we come back, and there's somebody raffling around in the fire station. Luckily, we haven't had a big loss that we're aware of. But that's primary for security, so we can keep the doors open where the staff vehicles are parked. Again, it's a safety mechanism. We're pulling in and out of the station, keep kids away from the apparatus bay. That's, we try to watch, but when you're pulling in apparatus bay, you're trying to make sure you don't hit the building and get in there, and you're not really watching for someplace a kid would be, you're not expecting them to be there. We've had several of those occurrences at station two, and we've used over, probably the last eight years, we've had some savings from two different budgets where we've put partials of the fence in, and this is the last remaining portion, and obviously the biggest expense.
So you're going, I mean, I live over there, but so always when we walk, we come back there, and we would cut through your parking lot, so you stopped us from doing that.
Yeah.
But, so now what you're going to do, though, is you're going to block off the whole, so, so when you all leave, you'll actually have to go out of gate?
No, we'll go out the, the exit out of the bay. We won't have a fence at that part. It's back where we come into the fire station where the employees park.
Yeah.
And where we're washing the truck, doing maintenance, doing training out the back side of the station.
Dadian right there at, or not Dadian, but running to the-
Kind of where that big transformer sits, right across that.
Okay. The next item, it says to replace two sets of hydraulic rescue tools, and that would be seventy-five thousand dollars. Bunker gear replacement for twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's going to be grant funded by TC ESD. The next item is Tarrant County College gun range contract payment. That's every three years, and it's twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Roof repair for the police department, that's going to come from ARPA funds, and that's going to be two hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars. Next is replacing a backhoe. It's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. From the list I had, it looked like that the current one we have is from two thousand and four. Is that correct? Okay. And an equipment trailer for twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Next is the final phase of the Americans with Disabilities Act study for eighty thousand Next is the city facility improvements, a hundred thousand dollars. They're currently making a list of all city facilities that is going to include the community center. I know there's been questions about that, and you'll probably get more information about it once that list is completed. Park improvements, forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to replace water and pet fountains, eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars for park tables, trash cans, and doggy stations, and then seventeen thousand dollars for park benches. And on the next page-
What I laughed about was said the police roof repair. I was aiming to ask you if you shot holes through it.
We, we haven't done that, but we have had a number of weeks. It's the original roof that was on the building when it was built, so.
Vegetation growing up there, too.
Yeah, got some different aspects going.
And so replacing the gymnasium wall pads at the rec center, it's going to be sixty-two hundred dollars, and that's also going to include installation for that. A generator for the rec center of two hundred and five thousand dollars, that's also going to come from ARPA funds. Updated code books, it's going to be four thousand dollars. We try to update those every three years. It's on building and fire codes. Also, an additional inspections vehicle for thirty-five thousand dollars. Currently, we have more inspectors than we have vehicles. Next item is homeowners renovation incentive program for twenty-five thousand dollars. Half of that is going to come from the general fund, and half of that is going to come from water and wastewater. It's going to work similar to the building improvement grants, but I don't have any of like the specifics.
So, so we will do a workshop with the council. The initial idea, had some discussions with Chief Spears and, and Larry Little to encourage reinvestment in owner-occupied homes. The utility fund portion would be to offer replacement of the private sidelines, so between the home and the main, because there's inflow and infiltration, you know, rainwater getting into private sidelines, especially in the oldest neighborhoods in town that we end up having to pay for. When it goes in the main, we have to treat it. So we'll do a workshop on that, and, you know, hopefully, like with the building improvement grant, it becomes successful and proves to be a benefit.
Also, replacement of the digital sign on Saginaw Boulevard for sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. And then the last item, funding for citizen satisfaction survey for twelve thousand dollars and FAA certification for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Why does-
I'm sorry?
Why are we replacing sign?
I think Keith has the answer to that.
How much time have you got? Because when it was installed in two thousand and eleven, the software has changed significantly, certainly for computers. The software that, when they purchased it, worked off of a Windows ninety-seven, and at that time, we found an old laptop, an old tough book that the police had retired and with Windows ninety-seven. We can't do any updates or upgrades to it because of that. The other little small detail, which is a thorn in my side, is it loses contact and stops working. It still will pop, pop up out there, but it doesn't communicate from here. So I leave, I get in my truck, and I drive to the sign. If you'll notice, there's a big silver power box right there. I open it up, I power everything down, wait for about thirty seconds, and I power it back on, and I get in my truck and drive fast. Sorry, don't hear this, police chief, but drive as fast as I can back to the office and then turn on that laptop with Windows ninety-seven and hope that it connects. And if it doesn't, I have to go back and repeat the process again.
Let's just do it.
Also, if I spend too much time working on it, updating it, it loses connection. So I have to go back to the, turn it off.
Question on the generator, is that going to power the aquatic center too, so it won't have another freeze?
The purpose was for the recreation center, because whenever we built the facility, that was the largest facility in town, and it has been used as an emergency evacuation center in years past. When we've had hurricanes, we've had quite a few people that come up, came up and stayed, and we use that as an evacuation center. And when we had the freeze, we were not able to accommodate them because we didn't have a backup generator, and we had no place to, to take care of them. This would, this is not for a specific part of the rec center, it's for the whole thing, so it can be a, an emergency evacuation center again. If we ever had a tornado or, God forbid, another freeze, this would be able to take care of it.
Mayor, you have a-
I just have a question. She had the police department roof on her list as well as she had on her list. Is that the same number?
It's the same number, so I was just kind of breaking down like what was going to be used with ARPA funds, and I was just kind of going a little more into detail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're just going to do it once.
I had, I had one here back a few months ago, the animal shelter, we had talked about really needing to put a shade over the outside, and then also, and then, your guys are headed down the street, and then also, too, to resolve the, the water problem. Water comes in there and it stands and stagnates and stuff, so I didn't see anywhere in here where we were trying to address that.
Yeah, we're going to try to, of course, address that with the assessment that we're going to do. We're looking at some shelter products that we could put in place, and there has been a little bit of work done on the drainage across the, the play yard there, exercise yard to, but it, you can't, we can't eliminate all of that drainage and erosion off of there until we do an extensive French drain or something.
And I have a question about the survey. Twelve thousand dollars for a survey? Bring Micah back.
So, yeah, that's all on me. So this survey, we designed it to be known to each residential home, et cetera, and includes multifamily as well. So that is the, the amount that we calculated with contract with the postal service. Hopefully, that price has increased because I hear the postal service might increase their charges as well. But that includes the delivery and the return to us as well. If, let's say, only seventy percent of residents return their survey, that amount will be lowered because there will be charges when, once it goes through the system. So that's the calculation we came up with from that, and that includes also the software for that making the survey results. that includes also the software for that making the survey results.
Well, I haven't responded to it yet, but I got a, a text message the other day about a survey from Dynatta. It says here, Dynatta is conducting a short survey on issues important to residents of Saginaw. A few minutes of your time will make a difference. Are you even aware of this?
Yeah, so those are companies that are, do specialized surveys. For example, City Municipal Sales, they hired a company, and they do this, it's way more than twelve thousand dollars, because we're hiring their companies coming up and do, this doesn't include it, but if we were to pursue a different company, it will be much more pricey than twelve thousand. I did quote a company, and they were roughly twenty thousand. Just to sum it up, the email says, if we do survey money, we don't give results, as we usually do. I think the last survey, we have eighty-five hundred dollars for buyback. That's not a sample size for our city size of twenty-four thousand. So that's what the calculation will be for twelve thousand.
But our survey results have always been way low for a good data study.
Yeah, because usually, the last surveys done are usually like inputted on Facebook or on our bills, and not a lot of people look at that, or if you do, it's my set, but if you see someone through the mail, the likelihood of may respond even might increase. Again, we're not expecting all, I think about seventy thousand, whatever.
Close, closer eight thousand now.
We're not expecting all eight thousand to respond, but we're gonna do as much as possible, can't see a good sample size, but we're gonna do a performance.
You plan on advertising this, so people know that it's not something, because I refuse to respond to this, because I had no idea who or what it was.
Yeah, we have a good idea of how we're gonna market this out. Again, we're just, we are gonna workshop the, the survey as well in a future council meeting, which will be maybe the next one, I'm not sure. Just depending how, how you guys proceed with everything else, so.
All right. Okay. So, so just overall, this, this is just a graph showing, you know, expenses and revenues. We talked about the structurally sound budget. Our total one-time is about one-point-four million, and that includes the six-hundred-and-thirty-one in ARPA funding. So the general fund balance would be reduced by seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, almost seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight. This next schedule is just to show you the numbers behind the graph. I was gonna mention the, so the year-to-date is through June. We just balanced August yesterday, I mean, July yesterday, so we don't have those updated yet. And then there was a question about the estimated. The estimated, honestly, is not a, a great number to go by, and the reason for that is, Councilmember Lawson, you're correct, there will be vacancy savings, but those aren't included in my estimates at this point. It's more just included the items that have been approved by the city council through, throughout the year. Now, when we do a reconciliation at the end of the year and we do our year-end adjustments, then those kinds of things will be included. But there, there usually is, and particularly this year, and the police department especially, there'll be vacancy savings. Now, some of that vacancy savings is offset by overtime and expenses like that, but, but you will expect to see some vacancy savings, which will increase beginning fund balance. Okay, there was also a, a request to have a list of the items, the special requests that were not funded, and as Gabe mentioned earlier, the majority of these are ongoing expenses and positions. And, and you know, the, the expectation is that if we have a good year, sales tax strongs, our revenues come in, then those are things that would be looked at mid-year.
The, the one exception, and this will be a future workshop, would be related to communications, doing more, and, and those are some of the, the things identified. Potentially doing more video outreach and that sort of thing, so we'll, we'll pick that up at a later date.
And then there are two items also for animal services related to the building there, and those just weren't funded based on the assessment that we're doing, and, you know, do we want to spend forty thousand dollars finishing a shed if, if that's not gonna give us long-term results? And the same is true for the washer and dryer for forty-six thousand dollars. The vast majority of that is a electrical upgrade that would be needed, and so that's why it wasn't included, is, does that make sense to put that kind of money into the, the current facility if we're doing an assessment of what needs to be done with the animal shelter? Okay, so we're gonna talk about the debt service fund. If you recall, we issued twenty-three point seven million dollars this summer, and so the estimate at that time was that we would see a five-cent increase in the tax rate to pay the debt service for that. That's about a million and a half more in debt service that we're going to be paying every year for the library slash senior center. And the, the estimate, or after, after all is said and done, we got our certified values, and we calculated the tax rate, it's, it's four cents instead of five cents. So we are under, but it is an impact to the tax rate. And I think that we, when we advertised the bond election, I think it was made very clear that, you know, there's a, there's a resulting cost to all of these projects, and so that we're really gonna see it this year. The good news is, when we, when we talked to the citizens, when we advertised this sixty-eight million dollar bond election, we anticipated a thirteen cent increase overall in the tax rate, and right now, based on the first two years, and then estimates for the next two years, we're looking at maybe eleven cents versus thirteen cents. Of course, that could change. Interest rates are going up, it's, it's hard to know. But so far, we're doing better than advertised. So just a brief summary about the debt service funds. The main funding source here is property taxes. We also have interest earnings here. This is where we pay for the principal and interest on our debt. So when we're borrowing money, we have to pay principal and interest back, and this is what that, this is where the expense is in this fund. And then I just have the current INS rate, interest in sinking, and the proposed, and that's your four cent difference. We do have a little bit of a drawdown in fund balance, if you'll see in that far-right corner in proposed, fifty-nine thousand, and that's just excess collections from the previous year. And so part of the tax rate calculation wants you to use your excess collections from the previous year, so that helps reduce the amount that we have to collect in current-year taxes. Okay, so, and this is just a summary of TAD estimates. Our certified values, as I mentioned, came in last, last week. We've got over two-point-six billion dollars in assessed value. That's a nine-point, almost ten percent increase over the values last year. The existing value, so our existing properties increased about seven-point-eight percent, and then the amount of the, of the value that is because of new property, new improvements, was about forty-four point five million dollars, and that accounts for about two percent of that nine-point-nine percent increase. So existing values went up about eight percent, and new value accounted for about two percent of that. The average single, the tax, average taxable value of a single-family home last year was about two-hundred-and-two thousand, and now it's gone up to almost two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, and that's consistent with existing value going up about eight percent. So this is a comparison of our current rate compared to the proposed rate. It's overall about a three percent, three cent increase. I have the calculations there, the current year, the average home, a property owner for an average-value home is paying about nine-hundred-seventy-one dollars and seventy cents a year, and that's going to increase to one-thousand-one-hundred-nineteen dollars a year. That's an increase of a hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and nine cents a year. Now, if you recall, we increased the senior exemption. Senior, the average senior will pay, will have a savings of about a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars. So their, their tax bill will go from seven-hundred-and-thirty-one The, this is the same, the comparing tax rates, but the bottom part is what I want you to, to notice, because here tonight, you're going to have to, you're going to be asked to vote on the proposed tax rate, and these are the tax rates that need to be presented to you as a council and voted upon and advertised. So our, based on our certified values, our no-new revenue tax rate is the forty-three point nine-seven-one-four cents. Our voter approval tax rate, if we were calculating it, the three-point-five percent would be fifty-one point five-eight-seven-six cents. Because we have unused incremental value, our voter approval tax rate is increased by that increment, so that brings our voter approve rate to the fifty-three point two-four-eight-eight cents, and our de minimis rate is the fifty-two point four-five-oh-eight cents. So if you will notice, our proposed tax rate is lower than the voter approval tax rate, as well as lower than the de minimis tax rate.
What would the difference in the figures be if we had no change in the 2021 tax rate, if we kept it the same, instead of going up to the fifty-one thirty-seven?
Ask that a question again?
What would the difference be in, in the property tax collection if we maintain the 2021 tax rate?
We would be short a million dollars. We wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, your debt serv, we wouldn't be able to service the debt.
Yeah, we couldn't do that, because our, the city council already approved the bonds.
This is a comparison of surrounding cities now. Because everybody is in the same process as we are, these are our current rates, not proposed rates. Here in a week or two, everyone is going to have to do the advertising, so this is just to show you how we compare. We're the third lowest in this group of cities. We tried to get them in the surrounding area, and then Watauga, we usually use because they're a similar size. So that's what that is, and I'm, I'm saying we're third lowest if you look at the total tax rate. So that's it for general fund and debt service fund. Because the last meeting in July was canceled, we still have not gone over the water and wastewater fund, so I'm going to touch on the...
Before we jump into that...
Sure.
So, the whole reason we're having to raise it is because of the, the voters' bonds.
That's correct.
And if we don't raise it, then we gotta figure out a way to cut a million dollars out of our regular budget, which I don't have all the great diesel. I went through this, it'd be, be pretty tough.
Yeah, so, and I sent this out to the, the council, the operating portion of our tax rate is actually declining. A couple factors. One, the city council approved increasing the senior exemption, which means that we have to pick that revenue, lost revenue up somewhere. And then the voter-approved debt, as Kim mentioned, the biggest hit to the tax rate was this year, because our biggest project, the library and senior center, we issued the debt all at once.
There's a dilemma we're in, if we don't increase it by that percent.
When, when we, we sold twenty-three million dollars worth of bonds, we sort of sealed our fate. And, and I said at the time, just we'll raise our tax. We wouldn't have had much, because we had to wait for all the numbers from TAD, but that's, we knew that, and it was the outflow of the, the bond election last spring. We said, said we'd do this, we said we'll do it. It costs money, you gotta pay the bill. That's sort of outflows.
Well, I was just asking...
Sorry?
I was just asking that because the no-new revenue tax rate was forty-three ninety-seven as compared to forty-seven ninety-five. So I, I was just...
Yeah, Kim can explain that better than I can.
We definitely have increased expenditures, is what you're saying.
The no-new revenue tax rate is the tax rate that would generate the same amount as property tax as last year...
Right.
Based on the current-year values of the same properties.
So, and to put that in layman's terms, if all of our costs were fixed, it would give us the same amount of money. The problem, like we've gone over, there's inflationary costs everywhere that we've gotta, so if it's a desire of the council to cut services, then to chip down, we'd have to cut people or programs.
And it's not just services, though, it's debt service. I mean, we've made the commitment, we went through the tax rate impact analysis with all of y'all multiple times during the different steps of issuing the debt. And this frankly will be an issue until you finish issuing the debt, if you want to do the rest of the street projects and the park projects.
Just asking the questions.
Uh-huh. No, I just want to explain exactly what's going on.
And, and the good news going forward is, we get to these street projects, we will get money back from Tarrant County. So the street projects will not cost as much as we initially thought. We're not sure how much exactly we're hoping for, you know, fifty-fifty match on at least parts of it, so that, we'll cut that down from what we projected, so.
That's correct, and then like any new growth that we didn't factor into our projections will help lower the, the future increase, which we anticipate.
That's right, and we have, we have a couple new funds, TERS and, and the PID fund, so the incremental increase was very small this first year, because the values are as of January first. The value for the TERS for next year, by the January 2023, will be more significant. So half of that is going into the TERS fund, and half of that goes to the general fund. Okay. Any other questions before we, okay. So the water wastewater fund, the enterprise fund, every year we try to match what the city of Fort Worth does. So we get a hundred percent of our water, and a hundred percent of our wastewater is treated by the city of Fort Worth. The city of Fort Worth is raising their water rates by four-point-two-three percent, and wastewater by a ten-point-nine-four percent, and so we are proposing to increase our water rates by four percent and our sewer rates by eleven percent. The other thing that I don't have listed on here under revenues, frankly, just, it was, it was a, I just overlooked it, but we did talk about it during the fee study, was that we are, we have included in the proposed budget, changing the late fee from five dollars to the ten percent. We talked about that during the rates, during the comprehensive fee study. And then we are also increasing new move-ins, final fees, and transfer fees from ten dollars to fifteen dollars. Based on these rate increases, the average monthly increase for an average home which uses eight thousand gallons, which is, which is about our average, will be five dollars and sixty cents. The special requests, the one-time items that are included in the enterprise fund this year are sewer cleaning machine, a SCADA system upgrade, a sewer camera slash line locator, and then fifty percent of the home renovation incentive program that we've talked about previously. We're also continuing, as Trenton mentioned, the, continuing the design for the Fairmount twelve-inch sewer rehab phase two, and then he also mentioned the continued construction on the belt mill and the Northwest booster pump stations. So those are also included in this proposed budget. Again, I've included... Again, I've included a slide that compares our rates, but these are current rates and not proposed rates, just because we don't know what everybody else's proposed rates are. I will say that on the water side, we are the third lowest. And, and in sewer, we are the lowest. If we, based on our increases and everybody else's current rates, we'll still be third lowest in water and will move up to about middle of the range for sewer. But that's assuming no one else is going to change their rates, which I know won't happen because all of these cities, I think, are also, that's tr, that's true, correct.
Fort Worth is charging everybody.
Fort Worth customers as well. So this is our fund summary for the enterprise fund. The, so we do have a decrease in fund balance here. Those are for our one-time expenditures. But I did want to mention Mr. Lawson. We have built into our rates a surplus on the operating side of about two hundred and forty thousand. And then that's done intentionally in preparation of the sump program. So whenever we have those estimates, we want to start building this replacement into our rates.
Oh, okay.
So that's all I've got on the enterprise funds. I'm happy to answer questions. I know everybody's tired, so I'm trying to, trying to get through all of the funds that you haven't seen yet. The enterprise escrow fund, there's not a whole lot going on in here. This is where we collect and account for our impact fees. So we have the Fort Worth meter station upgrade. We have part of the Northwest booster pump station that's being funded with impact fees. And that's really all that's going on in the enterprise escrow fund. The police expendable trust fund was a fund we started budgeting last year. The revenue source here are confiscated properties and asset forfeitures. There's a small amount of expenditures here for supplies and K-9 unit expenses. And that's all that's going on in the expendable trust fund. The capital projects fund, I'm not going to go into detail because it pretty much mirrors the CIP. These are the projects listed for next year. Construction of Knowles, completion of the fire station, the CDBG sidewalk project. We'll be constructing the library senior center, Old Decatur Road North, and then the intersection improvements at Blue Mountain Industrial. There's miscellaneous funding sources. Not all of these are debt funded. As Gabe mentioned, some of it is going to be Tarrant County. Some of it we have escrow. Some of it will be developer contributions as well. I'm not going to go over, so these are, these are funds, the next few funds are funds that we've already talked about. The, and I'll just go over any changes. So the only changes in CCPD since the last time it was presented to you at a previous workshop is just the salary increases are included in these expenditures that weren't in there before. And the drainage utility fund, it's everything that you've seen previously. I don't think we had any changes there. The changes for salaries that go to pay for the maintenance workers and the environmental specialist and assistant, those cost increases were up based on the five percent increase. And that's the only change in drainage utility fund. In street maintenance funds, the change here is the Knowles Drive that Trenton talked about. The first time we talked about the street maintenance fund, we didn't have that, all of the evaluation done. And so as we were talking about the CIP update, that's when Randy identified the Knowles Drive from Park Center to Bailey Boswell as the project. So that's the difference from the last time you've seen this fund. In donations fund, there's no change, I don't believe, from the last time. But I did want to mention that since we made the push to advertise animal services donation, we have sixty accounts now that do monthly recurring donations and it's increasing. Pardon me?
It was just like a month?
I think so. Yeah, maybe a month and a half. General escrow fund, we've talked about this fund already. And the only change that we've made since the last time we talked was just the funding that we have in escrow for the Old Decatur Road North. Whoops. That's the only change we've made since the last time you've seen it. So we have two new funds. One is for the Belt Mill PID. And I saw that on the, I believe at the next city council meeting, you'll have an update to the annual service plan. And they'll talk about it then. These numbers will change based on that because I didn't have that at the time we prepared the proposed budget. So this is what it looks like in the current year. And then we also have the TERS fund. And this is the, this is the fund that I mentioned. We have, this will be the first year that we will be putting money into the TERS fund. So not only will the city be contributing, so will the Tarrant County and Tarrant County College District. So fifty percent of that new value, which I mentioned was, so the total incremental value was about two point seven million. About one point three five million of that value goes into this fund. So that is the same value for all three entities. And so we apply our tax rate to that incremental value and that's what will get deposited in this fund.
Does that have to be re-upped every year with those other entities? How does that work?
No, I believe the agreement was for the life of the TERS.
That's correct, yeah.
Because I'm thinking about changing leadership in Tarrant County and I don't have to go back and beg somebody new for money, so.
No.
Good.
Yeah, the only way that would change would be if the TERS itself changed, the boundaries, that sort of thing. Yeah.
Okay, so the next steps. We, so the next item on the agenda is to vote on the proposed tax rate. We are required by Friday to post it to our website. There'll be a quarter page ad in the newspaper and we also have to post that information to the TAD website. We still have one more council meeting, August sixteenth, to follow up on any budget items, discussions, decisions that still need to be made. There was on the calendar of Saturday, budget workshop, if that is still needed, on the twentieth. And then we would be scheduled to actually adopt the tax rate, have the public hearing, adopt the budget on a special meeting on Monday, August twenty-second. So what will be, what you'll be voting on in the next item is not, you're not setting the tax rate. It's just a vote for the proposed tax rate. It's acknowledging the fact that these are the tax rate calculations and that this is the tax rate that is being contemplated. We, after we've advertised, we can't go over that rate, but you can come lower than that rate. If you were to go over the rate that was proposed, we'd have to start all over again as far as advertising and public hearings and all of that.
Thank you, Kim. Looking at these, looking at these dates, we had tentatively a August twentieth budget retreat on that Saturday. I'm going to assume we don't need that unless y'all think differently. So that's, I want to bring that up to council, see what y'all think. I think we can continue discussing at the sixteenth meeting, follow up on some action items from tonight and hopefully wrap everything up if y'all are in agreement with that plan.
So I had a couple of questions. I know that our water park, when it's been a year almost since I toured it, when we, it was still down, there was some end-to-life things and I never have seen that replaced, like the picnic tables, things like that. And I didn't see that listed. Do you hear any words? What, what's the status of that? Because they looked in pretty rough shape a year ago, so I'm assuming they haven't gotten any better.
Yeah, so the plan is to tackle some of those remaining repairs at the end of the season, which I think we can catch in this current fiscal year-end with our year-end budget. There is, I'm trying to think, the sand filter. They have to come back and, and fix some cracking, some surfacing. And then, yeah, the picnic tables and other items.
And the second thing, and I don't know how, how we do this, Mayor, but I really think this, they, they brought up. I missed, sorry, I missed this in the first go around, but I caught it when you was going through it. The K-9 unit, I really personally think that K-9 unit, we need to wait until we get an absolute understanding of exactly what type of unit you're going to have, what, what's the thing, and bring it back to council once we have a thorough understanding of it and vote on it before we allocate money directly to it.
What additional information are you wanting to get?
I want to know exactly what's the program going to be, what are they going to actually use this animal for, other than just pulling people over and sniffing cars? You know, I want to know the whole thing, what's, you know, the, the whole, the whole system, how they're going to do the training, what type of national training, both the police officer and the dog. I have did a little research. I've talked to a couple of other police units and that use them. I've talked to the gentleman who runs it out at the airport. And it's all got to do with absolutely the program setup and it isn't the dog or the handler. It's actually a matched pair. So for, for me, I, I want to make absolutely sure, not that I don't trust you, but you know, twenty things. I want to make sure that we got a good program in place before we pull the trigger and spend that kind of money.
I'm hoping the chief can answer a lot of those questions tonight.
I can answer some of those questions tonight. When you talk about the overall goal of the programs, we're talking typically about a dual-purpose dog. You mentioned just making traffic stops and sniffing cars. If the canine makes that traffic stop, the canine handler, then they sniff that car. If it's another officer that makes that stop, typically under law, there's not enough time to hold that individual for a canine to get there and do a sniff unless probable cause is established. When we talk about probable cause, you know, I walk up on the car to, to serve a speeding citation and I smell marijuana coming from the vehicle. That would be probable cause. We're not training our dog in marijuana, so that's not what we're after. We fully believe that marijuana is going to be legalized across the nation in the next couple of years. There's no sense in having that dog trained in that capabilities. What we do see in our city, though, is fentanyl. We've had a number of, let me rephrase that. We've had several deaths. I'm not going to say a number imposed, implied that there's been a bunch. We have had fentanyl deaths here due to fentanyl overdose. Dogs that are trained on that, dogs that are trained on other narcotics, not marijuana, but narcotics that are actually out and about. As you know, Great Western Inn is a location that we deal with on a pretty regular basis. We make a large number of dope arrests out of Great Western Inn. Would the dog be useful in that scenario? Most certainly. The, the dual-purpose side of that dog is, is for tracking and, and bites if need be. But tracking is the, the bigger thing. And so when we have folks that take off in the fields, because we do have undeveloped property here and when they get into these high, high grassy areas and creek areas, the dog becomes, you know, just instrumental in, in making those, those catches or sniffing those, those folks out. So building searches is another place where the dog would be used. But as far as the officers making stops and holding people, waiting for the dog to get there, that's, it's really a thing of the past. That's under law. That can't happen anymore because we can't extend the stop without probable cause. And so your, I'm sorry, reasonable suspicion. So until we have that in place, every traffic stop that, that is made is handled just like they have been today even before a dog is in our system, so.
So would your dog be a locate or would it be a locate and catch on that second priority?
So we can determine what that is. Most locate dogs are locate and catch.
Because if you have a locate and catch dog, then you can't use it, say, to find a elderly person that's wandered off or a kid because it'll, it's.
No, you, you can. And so the difference is, is whether it's on leash or off leash. And so when you're talking about the, the canine problem or the canine program, bad guy bells out of the car and takes off. Officer hits a button on his vest, releases the dog. After giving commands for the person to stop, the dog could actually do that locate and catch. When you're talking about missing persons, that's a, a search that's done on a leash. You don't turn the dog loose to go willy-nilly look for somebody. So he's on leash while he's doing that. Largely with your building searches is the same way. The dog may be off-leash, but he's with the handler. And so he's at the handler's side. He's not running free through the building doing his own thing. So, so when you're talking about locates and locate and catch, I mean, they're, they're two different aspects. But a dog can do a locate, you know, Haltam routinely does demos where it's evidence. And so the dog is doing a locate on evidence. He doesn't bite the evidence and chew it and swallow it. He's trained to locate that and, and react accordingly, whether it be sit, it be paw, it be bark, whatever the case may be, depending on how the dog's trained. But that's what we're looking for as well, is a dog that has a, a true switch. And so the, the handlers that we're talking to here in our region, we had a board today of seven handlers to do the interviews for our K-9 potential handlers. All of them have dogs. All of them have dogs that are very well-mannered. They play with kids. They interact with kids, just like Sheldon does with the fire department. And when he's given the command to go to work, he turns on the switch and he goes to work. When work's done, give him his commands, he turns the switch off and he's back to playful puppy. Let's go to the kindergarten class and let everybody pet him. So yeah, the, the old days of dogs that, that you hear about are really at an end. And that's, that's where you had really hot dogs that were designed to be super aggressive. Law enforcement agencies aren't using those. Military does, but law enforcement does not utilize those type of, of animals for their programs anymore because you don't want the liability for the unintentional bite and things of that nature. So I've been around the, the hot dogs before and he had, yeah, you, you have to use caution with that because they will have a tendency to nip you. But the dogs that are being produced today and in law enforcement today, they've bred most of those characteristics out. Instead of looking for a temperament that's a eight out of ten, you're looking for a temperament that's a two or three out of ten. He has the capability to go there. And I'd say, as humans, we have the same thing. I'm a pretty easygoing person most of the time. But when I need to go to a ten, I can go to ten real quick. But when ten's over, I go back to, to my mellow, mellow self, right? And so I don't have to stay at that level and the dogs in, in the programs today don't stay at that level. I got folks laughing at me over there.
I remember when that, the, the dog, dog expert, the chief came, Lake Worth chief came and discussed it. He talked about a lot of those things and what the dogs can and can't do, and that was very enlightening for us. But the thing that stood out for me was the protection aspect for our guys. I'm all about defense. I want our guys to be safe. If, if a bad guy gets away, that's okay. I don't want, I want our guys to go home and act, you know? So that's why I'm, I'm a big fan of this program. I want to, I, I like the, the search aspects, especially where, you know, on lease kind of searches. But I also like the protection aspect for our, our fine individuals. So that's why I'm a big fan of this program and I think it can be, I want to see where it goes. I think it's going to be very exciting for us.
And to be honest with you, I think you'll see more of a community service benefit to the dog more so than even drug seizures or track and locates, things of that nature. Just the benefits of having the, the canine, as the fire department have seen with their program, the community involvement with that animal is.
And that's, I can one hundred percent get behind that right there, the, the community outreach. If that's what our main goal is, then, then that, that's, I'm good with that. And, and use the others. Because the safety aspect, I mean, you got one dog, the probability of that dog being, I mean, of course, the handler he's with, he'll, he'll protect, but all the other people out there, you know, you'd have to give every police officer a, a dog.
Right. And I understand where you're coming from there and, and you, just so everybody understands, I mean, the dog doesn't recognize the uniform. You know, the dog recognizes his handler and, and he'll recognize people that are with his handlers. When you're doing a building search, as long as I'm with the handler when I make entry, the dog will sniff me before I go in. If the dog is doing his rounds and he comes back to me, he realizes, hey, I'm, I'm a friendly guy, so he's not going to bite me. He's not going to bite me though unless I give him a command or if I do something to the dog in an aggressive nature. And so what his, his role really is, is more of a, a hold through bark. And so when he's off-leash that way, unless there's aggression or he's given a command to bite, that's when he does the bite. But otherwise, he's a, he's doing a lot of barking, letting you know, hey, over here, I got the guy. He's here and he waits for the handler to show up for commands on that. And nine times out of ten, the command is to heal. And the dog goes dormant while officers take someone into custody and there's no bite that ever takes place.
So the human, the, the interaction, that's going to be a big part of this and that's what I was.
Yes, sir. So we've, we've already started developing partnerships. We had Fort Worth, Haltam City, Lake Worth. DFW Airport, we're all some of the members that run our board today. And so these groups already have a training consortium where they train together. Most of them get their dogs from the same location. It's actually a breeder out in, say, a breeder, it's a provider out in California. Most dogs come from Europe. They import the dogs in. All of the agencies are, not all, the majority of the agencies around here seem to be using a facility out of California, because they are the best dogs and the best temperament dogs that they have for their programs. And I can't speak for every K-9 program out there. I've had very limited exposure of, after talking to JT, you know, when he was here making his presentation. I've been around the Lake Worth dogs, I've been around the Haltam dogs, even in my time there. What you see out of those programs is a really laid-back, mellow program. The dog will work when you need him to, just like I will go to work when I need to. But as far as getting along with citizens, my goal really is to develop those relationships and let people know that police department is a friendlier, kinder, gentler department than what it was back in the 70s. Yeah, that's true for every law enforcement organization, not just Saginaw. But that's what they strive for in their programs. When their dogs are around, normally they're off-leash, off muzzle, at the handler's side, and the dogs trained to stay at that point until given commands otherwise. And Lake Worth takes both their dogs into all the elementary and middle schools, encourages the interaction with the kids. Their dogs are track and hold dogs or bite dogs, and so they have no issues with that at all with the temperament of the dogs today. Haltam's running the same dog, same dogs from the same company, same thing with them. They take their dogs into the schools as part of their community programs, and they have no fear of these dogs reaching out and biting even...
So when you go to select your animal, there's a range, just like anything else. There's the ones that say they've got a grade C and the ones that got the grade A. How do you all determine when you go there which...
So I won't be going to make the selection, because I don't know enough about dogs. But we do have handlers in our area that have already offered their services. Provided we pay for their travel, they will go with us and help us select that animal. It's my understanding from talking to these handlers and other supervisors that we identify what we want our dog to be capable of. We then go to the provider, tell them, this is the kinda dog I'm looking for, and they say, hey, I got three dogs that meet that temperament. And then the handler goes to those three dogs, and you look for that natural interaction between handler and dog. They kinda choose each other, if you will. So it's kinda like going in the kennel or the animal shelter. You walk by three kennels, and dogs are barking and looking at you crazy, and you get to the next one, and he sits, and stick your hand up there, he starts licking on you, hey, that's the one I want. So kinda the selection process works the same way. The dog and the handler actually pick each other, and then they go through their training to become a usable unit.
That's how we picked our police chief.
Yeah.
Hold your hand up there if you like that.
Touched his nose.
Hope that's not on camera.
The chief?
Appreciate it.
Thanks, lady.
All right, any other question?
Yeah, when we had talked about this earlier a few weeks ago, you had said you had three officers identified as handlers. I believe you had lost one, maybe two of those officers. Do we have any officers still identified as handlers?
So I've not lost any of those officers that were interested in being a handler. No, we actually had four handlers that turned in interest letters. They did their interviews today. I know who the board has selected. I'm not prepared to make that name public yet, so this wouldn't be the avenue in which to do that. But we have two extremely strong candidates, excuse me, that the board, the panel identified as being good K-9 handlers in the future. And so we feel like we have probably a better-than-average pool for that, going in with four people, two of those being extremely strong K-9 handler prospects. I think we'll be prepared to make that announcement pretty soon, but with those interviews just taking place today, it'll probably be next week before we do so.
All right, can we move on?
Yeah, we had two requests, or one request, two. I just wanna make sure they get documented, we get, there's no confusion. Way back at the beginning, asked for examples of salaries, the salary adjustments. And then on the other page, the maintenance budget, I think it was like $200,000. I wrote it in my notes, I didn't ask you here, but notes, could I get that broken down by building?
I don't know that we'd do it by building, it might be by department, but we could probably come pretty close.
Because maintenance would be a building, right?
Yeah.
That's why I said building.
Well, it includes a lot, it includes, I don't know if you have it by facility, do you...
I don't have it by facility, other than what Job's working on right now. He's kinda breaking it down on...
So that's the, those are the needs, facility needs, but so in any given year, it could change, right? We, like this year, we're gonna probably have to replace three air conditioners.
Yeah.
And so it's not allocated by facility.
Yeah, we can get you a rough estimate, and then we can get the salary data for our 16th meeting.
There's only two things I had written down.
Excellent. And then the fee adjustments that we discussed.
And earlier in the year, we had asked you for a breakdown in job descriptions of the interns and apprentices, what the salaries or, yeah, were gonna be for those individuals, or not for the individuals, but, you know, for the interns. And we haven't received that yet. I'd like to know what that's gonna be budgeted for next year.
Where the apprentices and interns are budgeted?
Apprentices and interns.
Yeah. Kim, you wanna address that?
We had asked you for that back in March and have not heard back, because that was part of your work plan that we had requested from you.
I don't recall that from the rest of the council, is that true? I sent a, we sent a breakdown of positions. Lee's just sent out a memo about the student apprentice program and our interns. So, yeah.
I don't recall any apprentice interns that are being on the work plan.
Yeah, he had that on the work plan.
Yeah, it wasn't on the work plan. So our...
We had asked for the description and what it was gonna cost us. Yeah, it was.
We've budgeted since...
Looked for March 1st and March 15th.
We can, we can get a list of what's included in the budget. I don't wanna just do math in my head at this late hour.
Yeah, we've...
But we have, we have, so basically what we budget for the apprentice program was based on what we have this current year. And we budget a dollar amount. So if there's fewer interns, but they wanna work more hours, then that's great. Or if there's, you know, or vice versa. If we've got more than to make it work within the budget, they'll work fewer hours. I can tell you the total dollar amount, I'll, we'll get that answer to you. As far as the administrative interns, they're too budgeted, and there have been too budgeted for...
Since 2018.
Two or three years at least.
If I can just say, I know everybody probably hadn't had a chance to read the memo I sent out this morning, but actually that information's in there in just written form. It tells the number of positions for the apprentices and the interns and where the total amount for both of those programs and where to find it in the budget.
Okay, so it sounds like the answer's already been provided.
Yeah.
Yeah, so take a look at that and tell if there's anything further.
All right, so back to the question on, one question on dates. So have a meeting on the 16th, discuss follow-up items there on the 16th. Budget routine on the 20th. I'm gonna propose we don't need that unless something extraordinary pops up. What do y'all think? Right now, I don't think we need it, and I don't know, want to plan anything and make staff plan for this unless it's just absolutely necessary. So what is it that we need on the 20th, on the 20th that we can't do on the 16th?
You're the new guy.
I'm good with that.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
Following everything and doing everything, so I'm good with it.
Yes, ma'am.
I think last year was the first year we, last year was the first year we did not have the Saturday meeting since I've been on. And we have done such a good job, our staff has done such a good job, and the process we now have of starting so early in the year of tackling that budget, I think is what enabled us to feel like we did not need the Saturday meeting last year, and I think we're in the same shape this year. I think the loose ends can be taken care of on the 16th.
Yeah, we've got an entire council meeting between now and then, we can go through.
So when would we have to publish that Saturday meeting if in fact we had one? Don't we have to make a public... So after the 16th, if something comes up where we think we need the Saturday meeting, we could still do it.
We could. I also don't wanna, I mean, what you're doing is you're forcing staff to hold that day for us, where it may not be necessary. It's a Saturday, they could go do something with their families, but we're saying, no, you might have to be here, might not, might not be here. So that's why I wanted to make a decision tonight to say no. That was my point.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I don't think we're gonna need it.
It may be helpful, too. We've noted the things that you requested. Anything else between now and then, the 16th, we can get? Because I think with the time allotted in a workshop, we can go through everything. We started back in March and, yeah.
All right, it is getting late, let's move forward. I don't wanna, we're on, that's 15, we just finished, yay, thank you, Kim. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Jennifer, who's gone. 16th, Sarah Jackson regarding proposed fiscal year 2022, that's 23 tax rate, and notice of public hearing. Kim?
So this is the item that we require a vote for, and again, you're not approving the tax rate. You're just acknowledging that these tax rates have been presented to you, and this is what the proposed tax rate is. This is what will be advertised. You're not setting the tax rate, you won't be setting the tax rate until August 22nd.
We're saying this is what we will advertise in the paper and put all the legal notices and all that good stuff.
Yes, yes, this would be the hot, the highest it would go, and this is what will be put on the TAD website and our website.
So let's see, what would a motion of this caliber need to say?
It's not like when you're setting the tax rate, and it has to be specific language. This is just...
Okay. Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proposed 2022, 23 tax rate and notice of public hearing.
Good enough? Okay, let's vote. All right, thank you, Kim, I appreciate your hard work. Well done. 17th, discussing the transportation for senior citizens. Mayor Protim and Councilman Ruttucker.
I'm the one that asked to bring this forward and asked Charlie to go with me on this. Oh. Because of the, all the senior going on over here and all the senior activities over here at Mariposa, I think that we need to come up with some way to have transportation for our seniors. A lot of seniors have told me that they don't have a way to get to the pharmacy, the doctor, or whatever. I know that Catholic services do it on Monday and Wednesday, but doctor appointments don't always fall on Monday and Wednesday.
You don't have to just enter the city saginaw, it could be broader.
Well, it could be broader, yes. But another concern was, and I don't even know if this is feasible, and I should've asked Brandon, I guess, and I'm pretty sure Keith had a bunch of stuff on transportation also, but I'm just wondering if, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a van, but if we could have a program, and I don't even know if we can do this, if we could have a program that, say, a senior citizen needs to go from Mariposa to CVS Pharmacy, and they have nobody to help them, do we have a city car that we could, can we not do that? I mean, I know it's a big responsibility having a van, that's why, whereas, and I don't have one anymore, I don't transport kids anymore. But when I did, I know it's a big responsibility and everything, but I think that, is there something that we can do in the city that can help these seniors? Because we are inviting them, we're building all this senior housing over here. We're inviting them to come stay in Saginaw and live the rest of their life out here. And if they don't have family right here immediately, and they don't have a good friend that can take them somewhere, they're just kinda stuck. And we need to come up with something that we can do that with. And I remember Keith having some transfer, don't you, didn't you do that one time?
Yes and no. Yes, I was out of state last week, and when I got back, I looked at the council agenda to see what it was, and I saw the, this item on there, so I started trying to find some information that I had from just conversations that I've had in the past and just things that I've looked at. The current transportation with Tarrant County Transportation comes out of my budget, so I have, I've done a little bit of research just, you know, on this. And I've done a lot in the last day and a half currently with Tarrant County Transportation Service. It's a one-way trip of $2.50 there every Monday and Wednesday. It can be medical, shopping, recreational, just two days a week. I looked at, it was, I looked at some other cities in the area.
Keith, so that will, that folks, they'll pick them up, take them where? Is there a limitation to where they'll take them for $2.50?
I think it's gotta be to a medical facility.
Medical, it says medical trips, shopping trips, recreational trips, et cetera, between the hours.
But it's anywhere in Tarrant County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are other transportation, in other cities, like in Southlake, they have their own, where it's Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. It's free. Non-emergency transportation for Southlake seniors and disabled citizens. HEB has a similar thing that's Monday through Friday. Mid-Cities has that. North Hurson Hills actually has their own, even though they also partner with another group. And I thought it was kinda strange, I guess, maybe it's not. I was in Red River, New Mexico last week, and I was sitting on the porch during, it's monsoon season and it rains every single day, which really hurts your fishing. It slows it down, because the river muddies up, but I was sitting on the front porch watching it rain, and this bus drove by. I actually saw it several other days. It's not a bus like a school bus, like length or a city transit type deal, but it was, it was a bus that had probably four rows. It looked like a van front, and in the back it had, and it was through the city of Red River, which is 4,000 people, something like that. So I thought, well, I got in Monday morning and this morning, Monday, and started looking it up. And they have, actually have four buses that they transport people around. Two of them are ADA accessible on both sides. The other two are just on one side, and it's a free service that they provide for anyone. And it's like within a seven-mile radius or something like that, but that's something that they do.
Is there something, can we look at something like that, find out what it costs?
So, yeah, that's something we can look at, and maybe we can bring some costs. Now, you know, I would wanna defer, there's certainly liability with transport and lots of other things, but if that's a desire, we can look into it.
Well, I'm just thinking, we're inviting seniors to live here. We should do something to help them, you know, because some of them can't. My mother can't drive, so we take her everywhere, but I'm just saying, if I wasn't here, who would take her, you know?
I know the additions has a van sitting there. Maybe it's something we could work out a deal with them.
Yeah, you might could.
They're gonna provide that service for the residents there.
I don't know why they have a van, I did notice the...
Community Link, would they offer anything like that?
I don't think they do transport. We certainly ask.
I see people walking from Mariposa toward Blue Mountain, where that little strip center is there. I see them walking there, and I'm like...
Is Mariposa not a little van or anything?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge, I don't know. Yes, sir.
Well, since I had some new year announcements, for Decatur, Alabama, they had a senior center council of aging. They had a position from the city, brandy staff, mostly volunteer staff who helped do the city food kitchens and stuff at the facility. All of our members of the paid staff from the city, they had a city shuttle service driver, who's regularly going to go to the senior center, facilitating that. And then with seniors of the area, the senior, the leader was five, and then two shuttle vans as part of the city and in partnership with the county, the personnel would be driving, you know, back and forth to Walmart, back and forth to the CVS, back and forth to the medical. So then those city personnel would employ during the senior center, and then the type. And then additional ancillary facilities, they would do the shuttle van service with the ADA vans, in partnership with the local dealership that were using refurbished vehicles and discount. So it's out of the whole Alabama, got their seniors taking care of their budget.
That would be a good idea, too. But I just want us to look into it for our seniors. You know, many seniors, animals and kids I got.
I did contact, and I remember I was at a Rotary luncheon, Rotary meeting, probably a year and a half ago, maybe, and there's some people from Catholic charities that spoke, and they mentioned about transportation, so I thought, well, all right. So I called them on Monday. Not, I didn't realize in depth that they're partnering with Tarrant County Transportation Services, they're, they kind of do a lot of the work with them. So I asked them about, you know, we've got two days with Tarrant County Transportation, you know, we're looking at picking up the slack, what would it cost? He said, "Well, you probably need to contact them because we kind of sort of work for them and work with them." So he put me in touch with that person, so I'm just waiting to hear back to see if it's even an option to think.
Yeah, I think we can look at it. I think there may be some resources at the cog and other places and, yeah.
Let's see what our options.
We'll come back.
Definitely worth, yeah, looking at, getting the cogs.
All right, any other questions on this subject? It is late, so I'm trying to wrap this up. All right, so at 9:51, we are in executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087, deliberations regarding economic bill negotiations. We will return to adjournment.[1293.16]